Calling the, uh, November 5th, 2018 meeting of the planning commissioners.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Rankin.
I'm here.
Ms. Teetz.
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry. Mr. Prazner.
I'm here.
Mr. Stevens.
Here.
Mr. Puente.
Here.
And Mr. Wodisca is absent.
Alrighty. I get a motion to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we have an agenda, so we will jump into the first item, which is our speaker series. Learn about the built environment and carbon emissions.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, planning commissioners, as you know, uh, the group has been doing, uh, for about a year now, a speaker series where the idea is to invite outside speakers, experts in various topics that are of general interest to the city, and start a conversation, preferably be before they are in front of the commissioner of the council as a specific action item. It allows for an open conversation and dialogue about the issue, uh, and how it might apply to the city, uh, either in upcoming projects or future projects. Uh, tonight, I have the honor of presenting, uh, Chris Pike to you. Uh, Chris Pike has a PhD, and he is the Research Officer for the United States, US Green Building Council. Uh, Dr. Pike has experience in the private sector, nonprofits, and government, including service as Chief Operating Officer for G R E S B, uh, B V, Chief Strategy Officer for Acclima, Acclima Incorporated, and a physical scientist with the US Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA. He is a principal investigator for the Green Health Partnership, a five-year research initiative, supported by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation. He has served in a number of advisory roles, including a lead author for the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, Fifth Assessment Report, uh, Chair of the Chesapeake Bay Program Scientific and Technology Advisory Committee, and a member of the City of Alexandria's Green Building Policy Task Force. Dr. Pike is on the faculty of the Urban and Regional Planning Program at Georgetown University. He holds a PhD and MA from the University of California, Santa Barbara, and a BS from the College of William &amp; Mary, which is a fine college. Uh, I know someone who went there. Uh, Chris and Jim Snyder.
Virginia.
Uh, we sort of lucked into finding, uh, Chris. He and Jim Snyder met at a panel in Tyson's recently, uh, talking about sustainability and the, and the urban environment. Um, Jim thought it would be obviously a good fit for what's going on in the city with the conversation about the environment chapter, what's being discussed around the West Falls Church project, as well as infill that continues to be of interest, uh, throughout the city. Uh, with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Pike.
This button.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, turn green. So, um, hey, it's very, it's a pleasure to talk with you guys, and I really appreciate Jim kind of getting us connected, and I, and I hope that I can offer you, uh, in the spirit of your speaker series, something that is, uh, um, both, um, level-setting in terms of what the state-of-the-art for thinking about, uh, the, the management of carbon and greenhouse gas emissions, but also maybe informs some of the decisions that come to you with respect to land use, the, the design of projects, and some of those things, because there, so I do, I'm definitely wearing two different hats with you guys today. I, I have my US Green Building Council hat on, and we can talk about how we, how we get better, uh, individual buildings. I also have my Urban Planner hat, that's my, my Georgetown hat, and I'm happy to kind of fluidly go back and forth between those, or, or make no distinction. Um, but I am also happy to kind of follow this conversation where it does, and so I, I just wanted to kind of maybe set the stage for a conversation by, by asking and hopefully answering, um, at least from my perspective, four different questions. I, I, just to give you a little tiny bit of context on myself, I, I actually grew up in Arlington, I, I came to Falls Church frequently as a, as a kid, and so this is actually kind of nostalgic, which is really great. Um, but I also have been working on climate and the built environment for a very long time, uh, well, at least for me, I've, I've lasted fifteen years or so. Um, I've been working, uh, both, I, I spent about half of that time working intimately on Chesapeake Bay issues with, and, and as you, as you mentioned earlier, um, have, have worked closely with states and local governments in the context of the Chesapeake Bay program and on the water side, the adaptation, the impact side of climate change. In the last five or six years, I've worked very intensely on the energy side, so I'll certainly, I can certainly go back and forth, but today, for the, for the purposes of getting started, I want to focus on the energy, the carbon side, and if we, if we want to talk about the, the more physical side that, of, of, of climate, we can do that too. But I first want to start by, by kind of asking and answering these four questions. I want to level-set and, and talk to you guys about where do building, where do emissions from the built environment come from? We talk about greenhouse gas emissions, carbon emissions, what, what are we talking about exactly? And we'll, we'll talk about that real quickly. Then, how have we tried to reduce emissions over the past twenty-five years? And, and what the lens I'll put on that is the green building movement, which has been trying to do this now, which is crazy now for twenty-five years, and we have some ways that we, that we've tried, some things have worked, some things have not worked. We'll, and we'll talk about how things are changing to reduce emissions in the future, and then I want to leave you with five things that you could practically do today, or at least tomorrow. So what we'll go, hopefully in the next twenty minutes, we'll ask and answer all these questions. So first off, where do greenhouse gas emissions from the built environment come from? And this, on a certain level, feels obvious. We understand that when we burn fuels, um, whether it's, uh, natural gas or diesel or something like that, we, we could, we create greenhouse gas emissions along with other criteria, what we call criteria pollutants, those are the things regulated under the Clean Air Act. We also have other times pollutants are emitted, so things like refrigerants and, and, and things like that that are chemicals that affect the, the, the climate. We also have the energy that is consumed when we purchase electricity from a utility or steam or other kinds of things like that, and then we have the kinds of energy, the kinds of emissions that are induced, building users, services, deliveries, freight, um, those, those kinds of things where it's not ourselves burning the energy, but by, by, by creating a facility, we are inducing those emissions in others. And so the really most common things when we talk about greenhouse gas emissions, we're talking about natural gas, diesel, maybe fuel oil in, in different residential settings. We have, we have global warm, high global warming potential refrigerants, these are things like in a grocery or an industrial, or a light industrial facility, and we have the, the electricity we purchased, both from a utility, but also increasingly from ourselves, if we're putting solar panels on a rooftop. And then we have the huge categories of transportation, water, actually, when we turn the tap and water comes out, we actually, that, that water actually has embodied electricity, it took energy to be pumped, filtered, treated, and so it's not just a gallon, it's actually some kilowatts, and then ultimately some emissions that are coming out. And we'll talk a tiny bit about the embodied energy in materials. When we put up a building, um, or we, or we, or we renovate a structure, a lot of the energy is in, is not just coming out of a smokestack or out of a boiler, it's coming out of the materials that we put in the building. So, th- that's one of the reasons that greenhouse gas emissions are kind of an integrator. They basically, they, a lot of the things we do inside and outside a building touch on emissions. And so when it comes to the, the decisions that a planning commission makes, I wanted to give you kind of a little bit of a hierarchy, because especially as a buildings person, although I didn't start out as a building person, but, but over the last decade, I've very kind of come one, um, we often think about building more efficient buildings and having more efficient operations, like we were messing with the thermostat earlier, or, or we're talking about how efficient the build, the windows are, or the envelope, but it's important to note that those are actually essentially fine-tuning knobs on how much emissions a, a built environment makes. The big knobs are the things you guys control. They are location, land use, density, form, and the materials a building is made out of, how people get to and from the building, and not just people, but goods and services, the property type, the program, and, and the energy supply to which the building. Those are the things that last for decades, um, if not much longer, in the case of historic properties. These other things, uh, how the systems work, how the, how the building is operated, those can be changed either on a scale of years, or, or minutes, or seconds, actually. So, just wanted to give you a sense that the, a lot of the things that we control, the most fundamental, the land use program, the location, the density, that is the, that is the foundation upon which everything else you can, it'll be very difficult in operations to make up for your choice of land use density and profile. So, just to give you a sense, there's a continuum, they vary in impact, and they vary in the timing and, and then duration of their impact. So, I also want to, I want to give you a quantitative sense of how much this does or doesn't matter, and this is, this is by far the biggest eye test, and I apologize, but I, but I've had this around, but I wanted to give you just a sense of why are people picking on, how much difference do these decisions actually make? Like, are we talking a little bit, are we talking a few percentage points, or are we talking big differences? And I, I want to take this, this prototypical office building as an example. This is what we call the good old-fashioned ASHRAE, American Society for Heating and Refrigeration Engineers. The, um, this is a hundred and thirty-five thousand square foot office building. The only thing you need to know about this building is it's a bog standard, grade A, American, uh, average building, but, and I want to show you what happens when we change just three little factors about that building. I want to shift it from being in the ninetieth percentile, a high-efficiency building, a building that is better than ninety percent of buildings, to a building that is in the lowest ten percent, and I want to change it from a building in a sprawly location to one that is in a denser TOD-served area where transportation is less. What I want you to, only thing I need you to focus on is the upper-left little pie chart shows the carbon footprint of this office building, the annual operations, and the, the first, first number I want you to focus on is the eighteen-hundred-and-sixty metric tons of carbon per year. That means that when you combine the operation of that building with the transportation used to get to and from it, and a little pinch of the stuff it's made out of, and a pinch of the water that's used in that building, that's the, that's what happens when the building is highly efficient, i.e. the top ninety percent of all buildings, and it's in a dense transit-serve location. If you take the exact same building, but you operate it as a low-efficiency building, the bottom ten percent, you put it in one of the sprawlier locations, out, think, outer Leesburg, and you, and you use some water that has some high-energy intensity, say stuff you're pumping out of a great depth underwater, uh, under the ground, the same office building can, can emit eleven thousand metric tons per year. That's a factor of ten more. So, what I, the, the only point I really want you to take home is that when it comes to decisions about how, uh, we're not talking about spaceships, actually, so we're not talking about buildings that are so efficient they literally float off the ground, we're not even talking about the worst buildings, we're talking about the top ten versus the lower ten, and we're talking about realistic situations of being out in ex-urban sprawl versus being in a denser area. The reason people think this matters is it matters by a factor of ten. An efficient building in a good location have, can have one-tenth the emissions per year as, as an inefficient building in an inefficient location. And so, just, just for framing, obviously, your, your mileage will vary on any given building, but A, these are things you can quantify, they're things you can compare, and there are huge benefits to within the range of practice today, okay?
Yeah. What you mean by with the most efficient, what's, what's efficient about the, not the building?
Yeah, so, um, it, it, but for the point of, the purpose of this comparison, I'm using ninety percent to be what the, um, if, so the, the USCPA runs a program called Energy Star, just like for appliances, they have that same program for buildings. And when we say it's efficient, we say that on a, on a per-square-foot basis, a, a, a built, an efficient building is going to cost less to operate and ultimately emit less emissions, and so EPA's Energy Star program allows you to kind of rank, rank any, certainly any office building, any school, any, any retail facility on a scale of zero to one hundred. A one hundred on that scale is a good building, is a great building, and as you get worse, they actually, the, the, the way the scale works is even though the scale is kind of going down, one hundred, ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, the, the amount of excess spending and excess emissions actually goes up faster than that.
And even, it comes from energy use?
Energy use, exclusively energy, so the, the energy they burn to, to, to heat, to heat the space, uh, heat water, put the lights on, condition the air, that kind of stuff. So when we say it's more efficient for building operations, that's what we're talking about, the, the basic keeping the lights on. When we talk about transportation, we're talking about the, the things that people go to and from the building, yeah, so that's a good question. Awesome. So, one of the questions we might ask is, okay, we didn't just roll out of bed and, and discover that buildings emit, and, and the, the buildings use energy and that they admit greenhouse gas emissions, that is not, I'm, I'm not here to be the first person to tell you that. Um, and in fact, we, as a, as a buildings industry, have kind of gotten religion about this since the late seventies, but, you know, prior to that time, we didn't really have energy codes for buildings, we, we, and, but the energy crisis of the seventies really, really kind of, kind of, pun, no pun intended, you know, shocked us into understanding that we could, through policy interventions, make a difference in how buildings, um, use energy and ultimately result in costs for folks, and impacts, whether they are long-term impacts, like green, greenhouse gas emissions, or short-term impacts like, 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 like a local pollution from energy generation, right? So let's talk for a tiny bit about what we have done the last twenty-five years to try to address, um, energy use and greenhouse gas emissions. I'm going to leave you with just five, five things we've done, that, that, as an entire green building movement, which is now composed of hundreds of thousands of people and tens of thousands of projects, what have we done? We have focused the last twenty-five years on what we call integrative design. That means that we are trying to build buildings as a system that use less energy, use less water, generate less waste, and in theory, we've been telling people, work together as a team, focus on this outcome, and you'll have a more efficient building. We've told them they can do that by improving efficiency, i.e. choosing better systems, more efficient boilers and chillers and lighting, and so examples of replacing, um, incandescent bulbs with LEDs, or replace, or making your air-conditioned system more efficient. And then we've told them, once you do all that, you, now you're in a position to, to meet some of your energy needs with clean energy. So that means we've typically said, hey, put some solar panels on your roof, and the, the more efficient your building, the, the more, the more of your power you're going to be able to generate through solar power, that's great, we're going to tell you to reduce, um, your transportation footprint by using denser transit, transit-accessible locations, and we're going to ask you to conserve water, divert waste, and choose recycled materials to make your buildings out of, taking together, that, this is our prevailing paradigm. We have codified that paradigm since this is, in, in, there are many different rating systems, but just as a, as a mental image, LEED version one went into use in April of nineteen ninety-seven, and right from the very beginning, we were worried about energy, we were worried about, um, construction waste, we were worried about ozone depletion, we were worried about operations, so we've been, and, and what I love about putting this one up there is that it, um, it's just a random alphabetized list of stuff, I, I love that it's in alphabetical order, so it had no particular, um, rhyme or reason, it just was a list of good stuff to do. And, um, come ten years later, we, we as a movement, um, got a little more rigorous, and we put a very high emphasis on carbon footprint, and these are the different issues that ten years ago, we said, green building in the US is to address this stuff, and maybe we got a little too strident, so, um, ten years later, we came up with a, with a, with another way of expressing that, and again, climate change, what, and greenhouse gas emissions were the most important things. So, when you ask, what are rating systems trying to do for buildings or neighborhoods? Well, these are the issues we think we're addressing, and, and these are the proportion, that if you look at a LEED scorecard, and you do this stuff on the scorecard in proportion to that, to what's on there, you'll find that the most important single thing is, is greenhouse gas emissions reduction, followed by human health and water resources and so forth. So my, my bottom line in telling you this is, we understand that there's a connection, we understand that these tools for a long time have been built to try to encourage project teams to do more. Here's, and here's what happens when we've done that. I just want to give you a couple of outcomes that are specific to Virginia. I don't have actually enough data to give you specifically for Falls Church or Northern Virginia, so I'm going to give you some Virginia data. What, what, what happens when we ask projects to use these tools? And actually, this is going to be one of these answers to, why is this building only so good? And why isn't it even better? So if you go out there and you say, one, when it comes to energy efficiency, that's the, that's the way that a building turns, uh, the energy it purchases into work, essentially conditioning the space, providing the lights, that kind of stuff. This, this little histogram right here, this little bar chart, shows you the, the improvements over energy code for all LEED buildings in Virginia over the past twenty years. And what you'll see is that, as time, so the way we say that is that the energy code is called ASHRAE, ninety-point-one, and, for most buildings, and so that's what they are required to do by law, otherwise they go away in the little shiny handcuffs. Um, the cool thing about green building rating systems is we can encourage people to do better than that level, and if, when you guys do things like require that, you are encouraging folks voluntarily. Now, the thing is, we give them flexibility. And so one of the questions is, how good do they, how, how much better than code do they do? We require everyone to be about ten percent better than code, so, but very few, only a few people come that close. Many people beat code by twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, the average is about twenty-eight percent on the long-term average, and a few really knock it out of the park. We're, we're talking here like your Discovery Elementary School type things, where you are near, near as, near as zero net energy out there on the right. As policymakers, though, the thing to ask is, um, folks, this tool works to get people to design buildings that are more efficient. However, the, the tool by itself only gets the market to go so far, and the tool would recognize buildings that do more. So one of the frontiers for reducing the energy and greenhouse gas emissions from buildings is to ask yourself, is to ask, just, just want to point this out to you, saying, we know that it's possible for buildings to be over here. In fact, dozens and dozens, if not hundreds, of buildings are to the right of the average. If a building comes to you and says, I'm going to build myself twenty percent better than code, you can, you can know by looking at this kind of thing, that that's A, entirely achievable, and entirely non-ambitious. And so one of the questions is, how do we challenge them by, by looking at information like this to do more? When you know that other buildings in Virginia are doing more, how do you get, how do you get buildings that at least in a Lake Wobegon sense are above average, in, in the spirit of that? So, we can, we can talk about that in a second. So, okay, we also, we, when we give preference for location, it works, um, um, for better or worse. So, green buildings are the places we ask for, they are denser, they are TOD, they are, they are CBD-type locations. Um, the, the good news is that we recognize and encourage these locations, and buildings tend to follow them. The bad news is, there's a lot of buildings that aren't in these locations that we aren't doing much to help. So there's buildings in other locations, that's a challenge. And just to give you a vignette about the other stuff, what are we really good at? We're really good at very specific tasks like construction waste diversion that take things out of landfills and reduce those kinds of things. More than ninety percent of projects do it, and that's really close to being institutionalized. What are we not so good at? Reusing structures to reduce the need for raw, new materials, only ten or twelve percent of projects are doing that, and so there's room for improvement and more direction. And, same thing with landscaping, we're really good at, at, at saving water indoors and out, so it's also one of those things, if projects are, say, say, pushing back against the idea of doing more to save water indoor and out, there's tons of examples of, of saving lots of water. But, here's what, here's where I want to, I want to take you, I want to take you to the sense of, what are the challenge, what's changing? So everything I just showed you is the culmination, is kind of a, a state of the, a state of the industry. P, what I want to give you the sense is that, when it comes to the, the design of, of whether it's buildings, or even neighborhoods, or master-planned communities, we, there are, there is tang, it is, it is very practical for the green building movement and, and our allies in, in related fields, to get the building, to get the building industry to deliver projects that are ten, twenty, thirty percent better, and that, that are working across multiple things that contribute to greenhouse gas emissions. But I think there's a question of whether that's enough, and whether that meets the policy objectives that local governments increasingly are putting. So I want to give you three things that are changing. I want to talk to you about how expecta, expectations for buildings are changing with regard to, to carbon and greenhouse gas emissions, I want to talk about the, the role of, of sort of cheaper, clean energy very briefly, and then I want to talk about this, a growing split between energy and emissions, these two things which have been in our minds at least, in lockstep for twenty-five years, there's some real tangible reasons that they're not always the same, and so I just want to give you three thoughts. One is changing in expectations. So, you might have, you may or may not be familiar with what I said earlier about the ASHRAE, ninety-point-one energy code, or anything like that, but the, the issue there is, for the last twenty-five years, we've relied on national bodies essentially to set energy code, and then local government could decide, hey, I'm going to beat that, that energy code by a little bit. But the fundamental determinant of how good a building you got was something set by a national body. That's changing. That's changing, in, in a really profound and interesting way to which local government is on the forefront. And I want to give you three examples. So, uh, as, as just examples of this change, as you know, local governments are setting aggressive environmental goals for their communities, and sometimes they are expressed like Arlington has, with its Climate Action Plan that is specified, fairly dramatic, fifty-plus percent reductions in greenhouse gas emissions out at 2045. You could be British Columbia, which has said, our new construction is going to be very low-carbon, or you could be London and, and UK, which, similar to Arlington, has set a trajectory for improvement. The bottom line in any of these cases is that these local governments have apportioned those goals among the sectors of their local economy, and then they have asked, for instance, their building sector to do their fair share to contribute to those emissions reductions. And the result is specific requirements for buildings. So if you go to one of the, the municipal buildings in Arlington, you can find their label, which, it, this is the, this is the Arlington one on the left, and it says, this is the energy intensity target for 2050 for this building in Arlington, which is half what the building would, would do under a baseline scenario. You can go to British Columbia, you can find this, a very similar sticker with a very similar policy intent, you can go to the UK, where they grade every building on an A to F, or A to G scale, and actually, they're saying that buildings that are down here at F and G are, may not be, may not be least, actually, unless they become more efficient. One way or the other, what I, the reason I want, I want to call this to your attention is, this is a huge change. This is not referencing a national body to tell buildings how good they need to be. This is local government saying, our community is looking to reduce its overall greenhouse gas emissions footprint to reduce pollution, and this is what we need from buildings, and then passing that down as a requirement. In some ways, that is super scary, um, if you're in the building sector, because you went from one kind of level, national playing field, but on the other hand, the, 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 these communities are doing this because they've decided that they have specific local goals that need to get translated down to the sectors of their local economy, and in turn, into the buildings in their economy. And this is an expression of that change. And I'll just say, this is, it, it's easy to overlook how important that little window sticker on a building might be, but the, the change in control and the change in where the decision about what's good enough for a community is, is profound. And so, I won't overly belabor that, but, yeah.
Yeah, like, really quick.
Yeah, go, yeah, please.
Obviously, Virginia is a Dillon-Rule state.
Yes.
So, in this case, is Arlington doing this as part of a negotiation to get them to meet these goals?
There's two, there's two ways, so.
Because I don't think the state code is really helping us with this.
No, that's right, so this, on the left is for municipals, on, on, so they, they do this full labeling on municipals, and then they use the Arlington-style, um, persuasion
Right.
To, to, to.
No, this is the way we have to, as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because we can't make anyone do this.
That's right.
Because of the state code.
So they do this.
Because they regulate by FAR.
Right, I know.
So they can offer bonus.
Well, I just, I just, you know, it's just being more aggressive than what I'd heard before, but, yeah, I know, I mean, I know that it's, it's an exchange, you do this, and we'll give you that, I understand that.
And to, and they lead by example in this particular, that's one of the cool things about the AIR program, is when they've been able to, to lead by example in how they, in how they both, the transparency and the goal-setting.
Right, and we do the same thing, but we do it based on high smoking.
Yeah.
Which does increase FAR, but we're just doing it a different way and not as.
We do it on a negotiation basis.
Right, right. Well, but there, there technically have to be a negotiation technically, because of the way the state code is. You know, they could say this for that, but in the end.
Oh, in Arlington?
Yeah.
It's just, it's on a chart, and they can just select, so it's just, there's no.
But I mean, it's just like, we could do the same thing, we just have chosen not.
Fairfax does it through your comp plan, they set goals.
Similar to what we're doing.
They, they work through proper, you know, and there are some incentives, but a lot of times, it's, it is, you know, negotiation, and it's, it's a political process, and there are various things that come into it, and there's certain politicians that may push harder on a developer, in a certain spot, to attain LEED at a certain level, you know, for various reasons. But, yeah, there's kind of like, you know, just kind of overt ways, and then there are sort of less overt ways to encourage or require. But I don't think Virginia completely, you know, the state code completely, I don't know if we're completely prohibiting anyone from requiring LEED. I haven't heard of jurisdiction that absolutely requires LEED. Um, you know, and something that Fairfax has struggled with, um, in areas, you know, in its, in Tyson's and Ruston, and those suburban corridor, and in its areas of, you know, the, the revitalization areas, you know, there's very, very strong language in the comp plan that's expected, certification is expected. And push comes to shove, has that been a reason to deny a project?
Yeah.
And that's usually what's become very difficult, um, to, you know, you know, typically, they wouldn't deny something only for that reason.
That's right, and this, and this, the thing I want, and, and the thing I would like to drive home, in that, in that spirit of saying, in that negotiation, we've had this conversation with folks like the, the DC government as well, one of the questions is always, you know, what's feasible, what's too much, and, and what, and that's one of these things about, we can have a discussion, a lot of that conversation has been about, uh, maybe a level of certification, or whether certification happens, or, or what those design guidelines might be, but these kind of things show that, when it comes to, who determines what level of energy performance is enough for a building, or by extension, carbon is enough, the point of that control is changing, and it's not sufficient, a, and And it's not sufficient, and you can have a lead silver building with a wide range of outcomes. You can have a lead gold building with a wide range of outcomes. And it's something where one can be more explicit. And if one wants to link it up to, say, a climate action plan for the jurisdiction, that is, the certification infrastructure provides the basis, but it needs, but there's also, there's both a benefit to being more directive. And when you, that's, I don't want to open Pandora's box, but that's, you can be more directive and you can be, and you can actually kind of really take the pulse of how, how, how much is the market going to move by itself? And how much extra push can you get it before you start running to the, you know, to places where people don't seem to be able to go? Right? And, and so, but these are great, these are great observations. And so, these are obviously, these kind of stir your thinking about what's, you know, what, how do you, how do you move the conversation? At the same time, there are exogenous factors. And I'll just give you another, I'll be done in about five minutes. I don't want to overstay my welcome. But the, a couple of things that really matter in terms of the things that have changed. When I say we've been doing this as an industry for twenty-five years, okay. Last twenty-five years, we have, we have been working under an assumption that energy efficiency is the first and foremost cheapest way to improve the building, to make it, to make it cost less to operate. One of the most profound thing that has happened is a plummet in the cost of renewable energy systems, both to put on a building, to put near a building, and to acquire commercially. Just to give you a sense of the scale of that change. So the green building movement, as I said, originated in the late seventies. And literally, energy produced from renewable supply was almost a factor of one hundred more expensive than it is commercially today. So that's an incredible and profound change. And obviously, the market has responded by beginning to install lots more renewables. And depending on the exact circumstances and the exact relationships for any given project in the utility context, this is, this is changing. The other part that I, this is a little, maybe something you may be a little less familiar with, but as those renewables become more and more, and say, for instance, we get offshore wind in Virginia as a possibility and other kinds of renewable generation coming in from West Virginia, one of the amazing things that happens is a change. We've taken for granted that the way our utility grids, our purchased electricity is pretty much the same or average emissions all the time. Essentially, we could just take the average. But what's happening is, as we get more renewables, we have changes in the way that, in the relationship between the way we consume energy and emissions that come out. And the graph here, I just want to show you very, very, just because this gets me excited. I'm a geeky scientist, so this is, these are days, these are hours of the day. This is midnight, this is, this is noon, and this is, this is midnight again. The only thing I want you to see in this geeky graph that I picked totally at random for a place in California is this is what they call a duck curve. And this is the head of the duck, this is the wing of the duck, and this is the tail of the duck. And the only thing you really need to know is that as you go from, from basically the high point of the day, this is basically the late afternoon, to the mid-afternoon hours, there is a hundred and twenty-four percent difference in the carbon content of the electricity. So that means if you are using energy at around noon, when the grid is actually very clean because renewables and so forth is on the grid and people's rooftop solar and so forth is working really well, is, is, it goes down. And as the sun goes down and energy use peaks in a hot afternoon, the carbon content, they're firing up the gas turbines and they're importing power from Nevada and the emissions content goes up by a hundred and twenty-four percent.
Or you need better storage.
Yes, that's exactly right. So the idea that, when you talk about why this phenomenon is a, is a almost inevitable by product of a cleaner grid and it requires our built environment to be responsive to this, to understand not just on average, but to understand when and where it's using energy in a way that when we were just running a coal plant twenty-four seven, a three sixty-five, we didn't care. It was, it was the same all the time. But this is the grid of the future, whether you are in Virginia or whether you're in California or whether you're in Sydney, Australia. And so over the life of projects that you're looking at now, this kind of dynamism and the ability to know when and where you use energy and to make a smart decision, whether it's on price, and I'll just say one last thing because it's so geekily fun. When that carbon content is low, the wholesale price of electricity in California approaches zero. So if you, in terms of when you can use, when you'd like to economically use, it is actually at those times. So saving and saving, just turning off the lights actually is not always the right answer in this kind of grid in the future. So just want to give you, give a taste of where the future is going. So let me wrap up and say, where are we going in the future? And I want to give you a couple of things and I want to give you these take-home messages. What, where are we going? More efficiency, more electrification, more clean energy, a more dynamic energy supply, and a more of a focus on lifecycle emissions. And so I'll run you very briefly through, if we've had twenty-five years of doing it the way I told you, where we have integrated design, energy efficiency, a pinch of renewables, and TOD, that's awesome. And there's nothing wrong with that, but there's some things we're going to do more of. We are going to do more efficiency. So these codes that require buildings to get more efficient with energy are going to continue to plummet. So our buildings will be, because of broad, hopefully, with local adoption of broad codes, we will continue to see these go down. These may or may not be at the same rate as your policy goals and expectations for any given jurisdiction, but we will get more efficient, even if we just follow these glide paths down. If you, if you're a geek like me about this, what you're going to see is a reduction is a shift toward more electricity as a fuel so that we can shift the load, whether it's vehicles or buildings. We're going to shift the load to electricity and we're going to make more of that electricity with clean energy. And how quickly we're doing that is varying by different segments of our, of our economy. And buildings actually, you may not think about it, they're actually one of the furthest along. They're already quite electrified in most of what they do, and that's going to continue and accelerate. We're also going to see more large-scale, local renewable generation. And I realize that's, this is, this is something that we haven't yet seen a ton of in Northern Virginia. But if you look at other parts of the country, this is, the reason I put this picture up here is that this is an investor-owned, market-rate, unsubsidized combination of solar power and a seven-story office building. This build, this building and complex operate at net zero energy and are commercially, commercially, are commercially invested in. There's no, there's no public subsidy in these projects. This, just in the last couple of years, has become a reality, given the cost, the cost structure of certain utilities in the country and, and the, and the cost of that kind of renewable power. So it's not just on the rooftop, it's the rooftop and the complex and the things working together to provide those kind of things. At the same time, we have other organizations who are doing large-scale renewable purchasing, whether you're a, an office REIT, like a real estate investment trust or some other kind of company. We are seeing whole companies purchase large amounts of renewable power. And that's something that they can do at scale today in ways that are cost competitive that weren't there a year ago. And then getting back to storage, the way we deal with that duck curve, that quacking duck curve, is we have these emerging things like energy storage that allow us to, to capture energy when it's cheap and clean and use it when it's dirty and expensive. And that technology is just on the cusp of where it is today. But if you think back five years ago about, about how expensive an LED light bulb was in Target or in Home Depot, and now you think how probably almost everything you would buy would be one of those things, that's where this technology is. And looking out five to ten years, this is, this really is how we're going to deal with energy. Last thing I'll say in terms of this, this forward-looking, and then I'll wrap up with these five, five points. As we get more efficient in operations, we, this issue of what stuff is made out of actually gets more important. And I just want to show you this, as a graphic illustration. On, when a building is delivered, on day one, a hundred percent of the emissions associated with that building before you turn it on are embodied emissions in the materials. And it takes for the average building almost twenty years of cumulative operations for the energy used to run the building to equal the energy used to put the building up. And over time, after, say, sixty years, operational energy does predominate. And so the amount of energy we use to run these buildings, it matters. But it builds over time. And for the first twenty or thirty years, it is the predominant thing. So if you live where I live, down near Potomac Yards in Alexandria, it's actually ironic that the kind of, shall I say, not particularly high-quality Target mall down there at Potomac Yard is a perfect example where it was designed to be a disposable land use. It had a twenty-five-year, it was designed to be a, you know, a temporary land use. Its design life was right about here. So over its lifetime, it has an even split of operational versus embodied energy. If that building was out there at sixty years or sixty years plus, you'd really care a lot. I almost don't care how that Target is operated, but I really do care what it's made out of. It turns out it's made out of junk, so that's, but anyway. That gives you a sense of how these things, when you're asking, you know, about some of these next-level questions. And as we get more efficient, the, i.e. that green line, that slope goes up even slower because we get more and more efficient, the stuff it's made out of matters more. So, okay, we won't, I won't belabor that to you, but, so I want to wrap up with five very, very quick things that you can do. That, or at least in the, from the perspective of folks who are thinking about land use planning and thinking about development, and then I'll, I'll get out of your hair. The, one, fundamentals. The size, density, and location are the fundamental determinants of GHGs. And when we talk about per capita, when we talk about the shared walls, we talk about the size of dwelling units, we talk about the floor area per occupant and the hours of operation, these are all the fundamental determinants. They, they matter more than anything else. Everything else is, is a second tier. We understand that it is increasingly possible for projects to not end with renewable energy, but start with, bless you, but start with renewable energy. It is getting incredibly cheap, whether you're buying it on your rooftop, you're putting it on a garage, or you're buying it as a, the larger the scale that you buy it, the more, the more cost-effective. And if it's not cost-effective today, we're looking at a, at a time horizon when over the period of one, two, three, four, five years, opportunities are changing and growing. And it's, it's the number one most reliable way to make a big difference in a carbon footprint right away. And the third one is our rating systems are changing. So rather than just using lead alone, we have ways to layer on with other programs that are more direction, that are more directed. So if we really care about zero net carbon, or we care about zero net water, we care about zero net waste, let's, let's ask for that outcome and we, and we can, and we can get that outcome. And using the same infrastructure we've developed over the last twenty-five years. And increasingly, the point of measurement is going from the ambitions of design to, to measured performance. And so asking, how do you not just set a design goal or a planning goal for a project, but how do you hold them accountable in operation? How do, and the technology to do this, which was not there twenty-five years ago, it wasn't even there five years ago, is now becoming ubiquitous, cheap, and accessible. And so the idea of saying, how do I, how do I marry my design goal with an operational performance? That's something that we're increasingly able to require. And how do you get ready for these dynamic grids of the future? Are you making room for batteries? Are you planning for storage? Are you ready to be a, what we call a good grid citizen in this, in this world? And so I wanted to leave you just with a few tangible places to go to learn more. I, I've scratched the surface on a bunch of things, which, whether it's labeling or how this goes into climate action planning or a few things. But I, what I, the impression I want to leave you is that this is a vigorous area of work where we, we have, we have done good things as a movement of people who are trying to create lower-carbon buildings for the last twenty-five years. But changes in who's, who's determining what's enough and the technology to drive improvements in performance, whether it's renewables or performance measurement, are poised to take us to a kind of a new, a new era of practice. We're not totally sure what that looks like right now, but we, but we have, we have the beginnings of that idea. So with that, that's what I prepared for you guys. I'm happy to answer your, to dialogue with you guys now or to engage in any kind of follow-up or whatnot.
By any chance, did you hear about or look at our plans for the new high school and the type of things we're trying?
I did a little bit. I actually had a chance to watch a video presentation of.
We've had a lot, not only that, but we've had so many different speakers in and about all kinds of renewable energy and things like that, so we've had a.
It specified that it'll be net zero-ready and also specified an EUI of twenty-two.
Which is incredibly, which is incredibly ambitious, right?
The current high school is ninety-five.
Yeah, so that, if you look at that histogram, right? I think one of the challenge, and I don't, this is why I don't know how you guys are thinking about this is, I think the challenge is to maintain a very high indoor environmental quality while hitting those ambitious goals. Because it's very easy to set a quantitative goal, not easy, it's not easy to hit them, but it's easy to set them. Like for the, the new school to have a very low EUI, but also to have, to deliver a high-quality learning environment for both the teacher and the, and the students. And that's one of the frontiers, we say, can we measure both? And if, I think if we were having a candid conversation with some of the leaders in the high-performance space, they, they know that's the, that's the challenge. So I just would put that on you guys a little bit to think. If you, if you want to think where the leadership frontier is when you're doing that high-energy efficiency, is saying, are you, are you getting, are you also, are you also measuring the delivered classroom experience as well? And that's, that's one of the things we're really focused on. But the two things go together.
The chart on the, the energy, the energy it takes to make, or the measures it takes to make the building versus it's operated, that's really striking. And so this is really just then about using better materials or materials that are locally sourced or.
Yeah, so all of them.
How actionable.
So one of them is, so A, if you kind of think about how do you reduce that embodied fraction? Reusing materials, so reusing foundations, frames, those kinds of stuff. So, or using, for instance, in some, some parts of the world, that is using timber or things that are lower emitting than, say, heavy concrete structures. Using recycled steel and, and some of those structures versus virgin materials. And so there, that's one of the, we talked about doing lifecycle analysis to understand what the practical options are. It's not, generally with creative design, it's not necessarily an issue of one's more costly than the other. They, they do represent just different thinking about the design of the thing. And, but this is an interesting thing. If we, if we were, if we were having a conversation in Europe, they, they are so much further down the road of, of high energy efficiency that they, they're less interested in the green because it's more baked into their process. They're more interested in the orange because that's what's left after you're highly efficient. And that's, and that's, but we're not, we're, we generally are not as far down that road.
They use pricing?
They do. The energy is a lot more expensive there. They're also way more totalitarian in there, or they're way more top-down in their controls. They're, they're way more controlling in the energy. They also don't have the loads on humidity control and things like that that we do. We, especially in this climate, we've got high heat and high humidity. That's not historically normal for Europe, so they can get away often without heavier conditioning loads. So it's not just that we stink, it's, it's actually, it's actually overstated. It's that they, they have a different climate to deal with and a different energy price structure.
One thing we found out after we built the new middle school, trying our best at that time, which was a long time ago now, but found out that so many of the materials used in the finishing and in the furnishing was that everything else was emitting all kinds of nasty stuff.
Yep.
And that, you know, people were getting basically sick from and everything else.
Yep.
And it was hard to qualify all that.
That is, I think it's a real big issue. And that's, that's one of the issues, for instance, just as an example, there's, there are very highly efficient buildings that, one of the ways they get that way is by having a very tight envelope. In other words, that they don't pass very much air, right, to your point. So things that actually may have been, you know, normal amounts of off-gassing and so forth, when you had them in an old leaky building, all that stuff just escaped and you didn't know about it, right? Now, to your point, when you put it in a sealed building, the kind of building that actually implied by that kind of high energy performance, now that stuff stays. And so, but also the good news is now it's possible to measure that stuff in real time and take action. And I think that's.
That wasn't possible back then.
It wasn't.
It was just noticed.
That, no, that's right. And that's actually, I spent a year away from the council, I'm working for a sensor company. But the times have changed. My, my daughter's high school, my daughter's middle school science project is going to involve taking particulate matter samples from a sensor on her backpack, you know, walking around her middle school. That thing costs fifty dollars and is pretty dang good sensor. So that, the idea that, you know, she can hang that off her backpack and walk from class to class is, that wasn't, that wasn't there. But now it is. And so I think it's a challenge on the public side to say, how do you, how do you adapt to a world where a middle schooler can carry a sensor that takes real-time measurements of the conditions in each classroom and then essentially puts it back and says, hey, how do you manage? That's a lot more granular than you probably historically tried to manage.
Is there much focus on trying to compare the relative impact of taking the existing building and renovating it versus trimming down building in there?
Yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a lot of good work on that. And that, as a signature, as a signature example, and I'd be happy to share this is, like, New York City did an entire thing on a very robust study on whether to refurbish or demolish its sort of nineteen-sixties small-height concrete plan buildings. And it, it actually determined in that case that it was better to demolish them from a lifecycle perspective. It, which is kind of counterintuitive to the other point. But, so those, those result, those analyses are increasingly done on a lifecycle basis and they are really hard to predict the outcome. But, but it, yes, is the short answer. Yeah.
Can you speak to increased costs associated with some of these systems and cost recovery?
Yeah, so it really depends on, we're in a situation where, so conventional green building practice, if you kind of rate it as sort of ten, twenty, thirty percent better than code and a kind of lead silver-type construction, I don't mean that just about lead, but, you know, has typically been baked in now to the point where it has essentially zero marginal cost. There maybe is some cost shifting in terms of where people are. But if we're looking at the highest-performance buildings that are, at least to the degree that we understand, net, net first capital costs, we're looking at something like a six to eight percent cost premium for basically super-efficient renewable-driven projects, right? Those are first costs. If we look at the time for cost recovery, and we did a pretty large study for the Department of Energy, for the Department of Defense, on, for the Department of Defense on the cost effectiveness of their green building program. We found that as long, if they were going to hold the building for at least ten, ten years, that basically anything up to roughly a fifteen to seventeen percent cost adder was cost-effective. So what I, the reason I'm laying that out is saying that any cost premium up to that level would have been at least break even, and anything less than that was saving that, saving DOD money over, over a ten-year hold, which actually, most of the time, we're holding an asset a lot longer than a ten-year hold. So, so, so the bottom line is, there is a spectrum of affordability in terms of, in terms of how you're shifting first costs to operational costs and you may or may not be able to recover those operational costs, depending on the circumstance.
That's what I was wondering is how well is that understood and accepted? Because, you know, a lot of developers build something and sell it, they don't care.
That's right. And so what they may get out of that is, is a, is a cost premium on sale. And what we see in, if you look kind of at the core, let's go to the commercial side for a second. We see persistently a, a, a increase in effective rents for, for high-performance properties that is on the order of three to four percent. And so that's not, not huge, it's still, you know, it's still basic real estate, but we see on average a cost premium of something like three to four percent in effective rents. That's, that's vacancy time plus the rent premium. And then we, we see sales price differences on the order of ten percent. And then we, we see sales price differences on the order of 10%. So you can reposition an asset using these kinds of tactics. If, if all you have, if you're a short hold, like you're an opportunity investor and you, you're going to build and, and exit, you're going to be looking for that asset value change at the end and you can, and we have a decent empirical basis now to say what that is. When it comes to if you're going to own it and hold it and try to lease it for more, what gets a little tricky, those are all essentially energy-side benefits. Where, where the benefits equate to some sort of direct operating cost. What's a little trickier is when you're building in health benefits or making buildings that are better for the occupant. Those aren't, it's not as easy to show where the added cost is, but we know that premium tenants prefer those features, so the effective rent situation gets better. So we're kind of, kind of going into a whole realm of, what I'll say is that there's two ways to build these, if, if you're really interested in these things, there's two ways to understand it. You can kind of do comparative cost of delivery and you can, and what, or you can do kind of bottom-up cost analysis where you're building up the cost. The, the bottom line for these two things is that when you look at comparative cost, where you look at the costs of green stuff versus non-green stuff, there is no on-average difference between green stuff and non-green stuff. What you see is there's expensive non-green, there's cheap non-green, there's expensive green, there's cheap green. And on average, they're pretty well mixed. So Davis Langdon's a cost consultant since then, they've done a number of landmark studies like that. When you build the building bottom-up and everything is additional, then, then you do get cost adders. If you do some innovative procurement where you do kind of a design-build, a design-build-operate, and you, and you put these things early in the system, you can drive those costs down to negligible levels. And there's some really great case studies by Department of Energy looking at the procurement process and how you bid for performance. And, and they have a lot of research, all right, this, I can just, throwing a ton at you.
People are saying, it's like on our level, some developer comes in, they want to do something we ask, they get, you know, more efficient, they complain about the cost. We're like, yeah, but we saw this president, he says it, it's not, you know, it's almost like part of the battle is educating these developers.
It absolutely is.
Probably above our pay grade.
But it, it, I think just to know that there is at least, I mean, even if you just take, discount everything I'm saying with 50%, a help, you can find examples of market-rate high performance. You can, you can find examples of procurement where you can drive, you can get delivery at, at near-market, at or near-market rates for high-performance projects if you start early enough and you have the right competitive bidding process. So if people tell you it costs 200% more, that's simply not, not the case. And, and we could have a poll, and I'd be happy to be a, to be a point of contact for that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I think usually by the time they get to us, they've got their, they've got the money up there. That's why I say it's a bit, bit above our level. But I also think there's more and more demand out there, I don't know, business person, office space. There's more and more demand, I think, for office space that meet certain criteria, so they could have a market on that side as well.
That's right.
You know, which is a society when you look at, said, I think, said this.
That's right. We hope as much of a green premium as a brown discount, as, as having a discount for not having a certain level of performance, that's real too. And, and actually, if you look at the most mature markets like London, which has the highest density of green stuff in the world, it's mostly brown discount. It's not, the, the, the good stuff is baked in and you're paying, you're getting a ding if you don't have it. Not as sexy as the premium, but, but real.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I thank you guys for giving so much time and I hope that was at least something different.
Thank you very much.
Great, cool, thank you. Get on with your evening.
Thank you very much. Next up, real lot of people here from the public, did you get any requests for items on the agenda?
I did not receive any speaker slips, but is there anybody?
If they come back, they'll have a count of it. So moving on, item number 6A, rezoning. I think this will be quick because we covered it last time and my, and all our stuff covered, is that accurate?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I'll introduce this item briefly and then turn it over for questions from the commission. So before you tonight, item 6A on your agenda, it's an action item for you all. It does need to be open to a public hearing. This is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the council on a rezoning and map amendment for the, for the acres to 34.65 acres, approximately 34.65 acres near the West Falls Church Metro. That includes both the 10-acre redevelopment site as well as the joint high school and middle school site, or proposed rather. The recommendation, so the requested action is for a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the council. Staff recommends, recommends a positive recommendation. And there are three primary reasons laid out in lines 18 through 22 of the staff report. Those recommendations are, one, consistency with the comprehensive plan and future land use map, which calls for redevelopment of the area and identifies the area as a revitalization district for the city. Second is to accommodate the anticipated special exception applications and site plan applications for the 10-acre redevelopment site. The RFP process is ongoing, council is actually holding a closed session tonight regarding the RFP process. And then number three is that the rezoning will also allow for the additional height as a byright use for the planned high school. As lines 24 through 26 point out, there are no changes since the Planning Commission last saw this at work section. With that, I'll turn it over to you for questions.
Great, seems like we have no comment from the public. Did you guys come up with any questions that you didn't think of last time?
We discussed that quite, quite a bit, first time around.
Not many questions, but as a nod to the presentation that we just heard, if we want to add a couple of words in the second whereas, where it says economic development project will permit additional height, we can add, and sustainable designs. So that's very apropos to that.
Yeah, that's good. That seems like a straightforward addition for whoever makes the law has it. That would be. All right, anybody want to?
Just to formally open it to public hearing.
Okay, do we have anyone from the public? No, we've seen literally no one.
And then we close it.
I will close this to the public. This isn't my regedit. All right, now we need a motion, all right?
Yes.
Anybody? Think we could just rattle off what has been provided? Oh, you're good at this.
I can do it, but Tim added something to it that he couldn't have. Okay, I'll do it. Whereas the proposed amendment to the official zoning map achieves conformance with the comprehensive plan and future land use plan map providing the basis and justification for the rezoning, whereas the proposed amendment to the official zoning map will accommodate anticipated special exceptions in site plans for the economic development project and will permit additional height for the, height and sustainable design for the new high school site plan. Whereas the proposed amendment to the official zoning map is consistent with trends of growth or change in the encouragement of the most appropriate use of land throughout the locality. Whereas the proposed amendment to the official zoning map destination meets to require consideration for a rezoning per the Falls Church City Code. Now, therefore, I move that the Planning Commission provide a recommendation of approval for TO 18-11 to the city council scheduled for second reading and public hearing on December 10th, 2018.
Second by Mr. Stevens.
Do we have to mention the addition?
She did.
I did.
You did.
I did, I did.
That's why I saw Paul right there.
Must have lost.
There's a lot of where at this.
It was seamless.
Seamless, okay, seamless, all right. Good, good done.
You hear like a roll call.
Mr. Snyder, hook us up with a roll call.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Yes.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Mr. Puentez?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
All right, and Mr. Wodisca is absent, the motion passes 6-0.
All right, thank you. Our next item, I think, is a quick review of a letter from us to the city council regarding the affordable living policy that we forgot last time, crafted by you and Russ.
Well, no, it's, it gets a little bit more complicated than that.
Okay, oh, you want to take it away?
If I might introduce it.
I saw you edited it, didn't you?
Yeah, you know, I, I wrote the original skeleton of it all and everything. And I did send it to Russ with a note saying that Rob was going to be working with me on it. And actually, I sent it to Russ just so that he, he would know that, hey, it was in the works. And so then Rob got ahold of it. And so the one that's contained within our packet is the one that Rob and I came up with. And Russ did send this to me today and said, hey, by the way, I had, I had a chance to look at the other one, so.
Okay, so we got one in our packet that you had put together and were running by Rob.
And actually, this is me and.
In parallel, Russ marked up the original, which we've just seen now. So I guess.
And I did, I did a comparison.
Is this timely, is this, what's the time?
The comments were requested by council by this Thursday, November 8.
Right.
You know, I looked at both, I'm, I'm, I'm good with this edited version we have here. Cause he added in some of the things that we had talked about, but. But I don't know, did, do you have problems with this version or?
I rather, I rather liked the one that was contained in the packet. I thought that was more forceful and more to a point and covered all the points that we had spoken about before. And so I think that this, this is, you know, kind of a shortened version of it. But I do think that the other one is, has more content in it.
Well, I guess you're, I mean, the bullet points are what, does kind of make it easier to read all the, like, what the five big things were, or more than that, actually.
And mine didn't have bullet points, mine had just an indentation, so it was not an ongoing thing such as this, so, so, there you go.
Yeah. That's the one that's in our packet.
Right, right, that's the one that's in the packet.
I do have a concern about this version where it says identify just one or two priorities. Seems like that could really kind of hamstring the negotiation process for voluntary concessions. I understand why, and kind of proposing that to kind of funnel the impact so that there's more dollars available for affordable housing. But in the process of doing that, you could wind up, you know, not allowing a bunch of other things that are, you know, are valuable as well. Yeah, it's kind of a complicated process as to how we get to the voluntary concessions and all of the things that go in there. And, and we had a pretty brief discussion of that. It just seems to me that that warrants a more expanded discussion before we say, let's limit it to one or two priorities.
Well, I think that's, in the last meeting, and I did re, I did take another look at the video and everything, that we did have quite a discussion on trying for this, particularly the property up at West Falls Church to try to get a greater amount of affordable housing. And again, all of these are just suggestions.
I wonder, like, I felt like when I read it, like, should, would it be better to identify, like, if they identify appropriate properties or buildings or something other than just priorities or?
Well, to be clear, the point there is right now, we get some money for affordable housing, we get some money for school construction.
Yeah.
There's some park money, some library money, some transportation money. And, and the, the concept was, let's just ask for two things so we can get more for those two things. And Tim's concerned, but, okay, but what about those other things?
Well, and I agree with, I think I agree with Tim's concern. I think it's, there are more than two priorities, I think that's, might be too limiting. And, you know, and it's always going to be, again, a series, you know, there's going to be several competing priorities and it's going to balance the act.
The reality, the, the, the pie's not going to get any bigger, the question is how at least most of them are.
Well, I, this bullet point doesn't really, I don't think.
I mean, that concept is included in Russ's edited group.
It is in his, but it, and it's a little clearer in his, I think in this one.
But they use that language, huh?
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that part of it is like, when I say identify one or two priorities, like, I first thought we were talking about identify one or two priorities within the city, not, it took me a while to figure out with the benefits package because you have to get down to the last sentence of it. So I just wondered if.
Could you scroll up to that one?
Yeah.
Certainly. Yeah, oh, boy.
Well, if you, if you just read, identify just one or two priorities that would be most valuable for our city and provide more funding for schools and affordable living, more support. At that point, you don't recognize that this is talking about a voluntary concession either. So I, I had a problem with it because I didn't think it was clear what it was trying to get at. And only later, when you said benefits package, I thought, well, maybe, I mean, is that what we're trying to get at?
And that's what Russ had spoken to at the last meeting, that the benefit package is getting.
The bullet point itself is not clear what it wants.
And it presupposes that, I mean, as important as affordable housing is, it presupposes that there's kind of consensus that that is in the top two. I don't know if we polled everyone on this commission, and certainly if we polled everyone in the city, that would be in the top two. I don't know, maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't. But I think it's, it's presumptuous to assume that, you know, it's, it's the city's top priority. I mean, I don't know, based on the way in the city's, the way the city's operated, I don't know. Maybe I might argue that it's not the city's top priority, but it's important, but I don't know if I would argue it's number one or number two.
That was when the visioning exercise was held and the eight core values of the city were put forward. Social sustainability and equity was, was one of the, was the lowest vote given.
Right, right.
So if you put it in the vote and only the top two go, it could be a challenge.
Yeah.
Well, and I, I think that, from my perspective, this commission did all this work that came with their idea and the question was, what, what do we think about it? I think we generally thought their ideas were good and we were trying to throw out some of their ideas. I do think that bullet does create changes of priority of, it, it extends beyond just this issue, I guess. You know, like, I think we all supported the tech, the strategies they wanted to do. But this one does pull more things into it by, by necessarily prioritizing this over other non-harvest issues, which maybe we don't intend to do with this one, if we're really just trying to focus on there.
Yeah, I just thought the, the approach and this is Russ's, basically his approach was a bit broader. It, it doesn't quite constrain it that much on this issue.
Right. Well, if we were going to like, I definitely, we did definitely talk about the first bullet point that dedicated stream of revenue. Russ also talked about it in his, so that's pretty clear.
And we did talk about the special exception.
Yeah. And the next one was fine, continue to allow cash. I just think that maybe that we could take out the identify, identify one. I didn't think we had consensus on the accessory dwelling units, but, you know.
But also just, you know, I mean, while we're mentioning that, since I know, and Fairfax actually is listed as a place that allows it, but Fairfax actually is fairly restrictive. You have to go and pour the borders on appeals in order to get one and, and only if you qualify, only if it's for an elderly or disabled person. So it's, you know, people, I'm not making judgment calls, some people argue it should be a lot more liberal, but currently it's actually highly restrictive there.
Well, our code does allow for something like that, but you have to meet certain criteria, just like Fairfax, you have to have off-street parking, and I believe it has to be a family member. So we do allow for it right now.
Is it by right or has to go to the poison?
I think it's by right, I don't think you have to go.
Yeah, I believe it is a set of criteria, there, there has to be some attachment to the original structure physically, it has to be a relative.
So you could, so you could do a basement or above the garage or add-on.
What happens when the, the eligible person dies or moves?
It only, you can only use the unit so long as the relative needs it, or a relative needs it.
We enforce that, does someone actually look that they pull out, like a kitchen, a second kitchen or an extra unit that we put in?
Well, it's.
We track that?
Quite a number of years ago.
We even know if we have many extra units.
Are we tracking that? Probably, I mean, we're not even tracking our special exceptions for drive-throughs very well. So I would say probably no. But it, it's something we're supposed to be tracking, you're right.
Yeah, Fairfax is like a, they track them and it's good for five years and then.
Rob, you want to speak to that?
Which part?
That one, about the accessory dwelling.
No, I mean, it's a, I thought we did talk about it last time.
Well, we did talk about it, but I think that if we're going to write a bullet point, we need to say that we currently have an, an accessory dwelling unit policy that only allows for attached units with off-street parking and it has to be a family member. We could talk about expanding, like, if you're going to add it, you would have to talk about expansion of that, not that we add one.
Just a wordsmith, and I think if you just replace the word "the" with "expanded," allow for expanded construction of.
Right. But I mean, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm fine with the current policy, I'm not sure if I'm for the expansion. You know, it just, I think that, that was something, I think we should say maybe explore it, because I think that's something that would have to be explored.
Right, it raises a host of issues. I mean, there's like some good parts, you know, arguments to be made for allowing that, like, everyone to have one apartment in the house. But then, you know, there's the flip side of, of, you know, you know, taking a single-family dwelling and turning it into a two-family dwelling. And what does that do as far as, you know, additional children and school system and that? And what does that do as far as, you know, additional children and school system and that? That's the classic argument that you see.
We, we have one on our street where they no longer have a person who actually qualifies in the unit. So what they've done now is they let that, they, they are renting it to a non-family member and letting them use their garage, and then they're all parking on the street. But in our city, it's very difficult to get anyone to go and check that out, so. And, I mean, and I think it's a big deal, except that on our, that part of the street that most people don't have, a lot of people don't, don't have driveways and things, so it is constricted parking there.
And there's lots of areas in the city that are blocked.
And, and we're, and our street's weird because we're by ourselves, so there is no overflow place to go. We're like in a, unless you park in the cemetery.
But I-
So, so real quick, as a reminder, they had a whole commission that worked on the thing, and then they came and presented to us, and then we got spit-balled
Right.
a bunch of ideas on the spot. And so I, I, without, I mean, I think-
We excel at that.
Yeah, I think our opinions are important, but maybe we're trying too hard to add on to something that they spent a lot of time working on. I, I thought the main purpose was to support their efforts and maybe potentially give them a couple of other things that we think are cool.
To endorse what they say.
Well, I, I thought the most important thing we talked about is the dedicated stream of revenue, because the thing was, they had a list of really great things to do, but they're depending on funding.
And, and the cash.
And the cash.
Which is, but they-
But they, 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 they recommended that.
And we said-
Yeah, I think, I think that, that, I, I agree with you that we, we agree with the policies that they came up with. And additionally, we'd like to see them have a dedicated stream of revenue to make those policies come true.
Well, nothing's in stone, so anything that you don't agree to, you know, we can just eliminate.
Right. So here's the challenge. Today's Monday. They need this feedback by Thursday. As far as I know, we're not meeting again between now and Thursday.
No, it's gotta, it's gotta get done tonight. But I would say that, you know, the first two things, this, at the beginning and the first two bullets seem to be all right. The next two, there's some questions on. You wanna scroll up to the next part?
Well, actually, the first three were okay with dedicate stream.
Yeah.
Leverage more and continue to allow cash, although we don't have to say that, because that's one of their policies.
Right. No, but it's, it's reiterating it, which is always good to do.
Yeah.
Now, the next one, market rate costs. Is there a problem with that one?
Which one?
Consider ways to bring down the market rate costs of the units and new mixed-use apartments and condominiums.
We did talk about that.
We did talk about that, and that has been, we had a couple of projects that did come in with that kind of idea. Um.
That's looking for kind of a more flexible zoning code.
Right. And the next one was more or less Paul's idea. And, uh, and then regional effort.
I'm not the only one who's argued that there's costs in the last-
No, no, I'm just saying.
I, I say the whole.
But the regional effort and, and the fields, I think, is the, is the two, two bullet points that we're not in.
So, yeah, I think we, yeah. In there, right.
And so the, those are the two we need to somewhat change or eliminate.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that, I think that leading the regional, regional effort and aggressively focused on preserving, I don't think those are bad things. Because they're pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I, I would say that-
I think the other two on top of that, consider ways to bring down market rate costs and streamline accelerate. There's a lot more work that has to be done for those two.
Sure, but I do think to Mindy's point, the two, there's two bullets that sort of reach, well, sort of reach beyond just, they have, they have
That we had the most contention about.
additional impacts beyond the housing. So the, the, um, accessory dwelling units, as we noted, has lots of little spillover impact.
Identify.
And we could, we could eliminate that.
So I think, personally, if we have those two bullets, I'm totally comfortable with everything else. Potentially, I'd be comfortable with some of those bullets as well, but I think in terms of trying to not go beyond the housing policy.
But we did talk an awful lot about the, uh, coffers and the community benefits, so the last time. Um.
Yeah, I mean, I think-
What did we replace with Russ's?
Russ's language was another approach would be reduce the fragmentary nature of the voluntary concessions. Currently, these concessions address the needs of numerous stakeholders and necessarily cover a host of city needs.
Can I just ask a question about that? So the, the voluntary concessions often include, right, I think is this language says, a whole range of things. It includes the, the transportation benefits, it includes the off-site benefits, it often includes the utility undergrounding.
Yep.
It includes the housing, the lead standards. So what's the, what's the expectation then that utility undergrounding and off-site transportation come off the list?
Right, yeah, I'm uncomfortable making that.
That was my concern.
Yeah, I think the main thing is just to increase the amount of affordable housing.
I think, I think when you were talking about, talking about that, we're talking about the, like, money for the parks, money for transport, you know, for like, I mean, but you're right. I mean, all of it, I don't think we can say for any project for sure which are gonna, what our priority is gonna be.
Ultimately, the council will-
If we have too many priorities, everything is spread. I think the concern last week, the last time, is that it's just spread you thin, right?
It is.
Right.
You know, a little bit of benefits for lots and lots of things.
Nothing was stopping. Nothing, it's pretty big difference.
Sure. I'm sure the parks guys would say, let, let's ditch it for housing, I want more money for the-
Right, I mean, it's a, ultimately, it's a policy decision. The council-
Right. I mean, if the two, if we're here now, two of them, this could not be one of the items.
Has to make the call about where they, where they wanna direct funds.
And that's what we're asking council to do in the, in the letter.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that, that, I guess that's my point. That seems to be a different issue. If we're saying, hey, we should ask for fewer concession, you know, fewer things that, voluntary concessions, so we get more bang for our buck. How is that necessarily related to before? Unless we're saying we want affordable housing to be one of those two, which I think we're not necessarily agreed upon. So that's where I think that may be a good policy guidance for council, but it seems separate from-
I, I agree. I don't think we can say limited to two things. I mean, I think ultimately, it's not, it, there's no-
I mean, this is essentially saying, we think the affordable housing component of concessions is more important than most of the other things.
Well, my, my suggestion-
I don't know if we-
It's like budget time. How, what do you cut, right? It's like budget time.
Yeah. Okay, so I didn't-
Who's saying what to cut?
Rather than, you know, break it over, why don't we just consider those two bullets out? And the rest of it seems to be pretty good.
Good. Yeah, the rest of it's pretty good, so it's sort of pie in the sky, but that's fine, I mean.
Okay.
I, I mean, I personally am fine with that. I don't wanna speak further.
I'm, I'm fine with it. If we take out those two, then I think we can-
And the one thing I did not do is put Russ's whole name in, so it, on, on that, the one that's in the packet, please put ELL.
Oh, yes, don't be-
But Russ was his co-owner.
Um, yes.
But I really appreciate, I'm not used to doing that much writing, and Rob was so good to take what I had and expand it a little bit, but for the most part, I was pretty pleased with it, you know. But then I couldn't pull it off my computer.
Right.
It was really frustrating.
Now, I feel a little bad, cause Russ isn't here, but that's what he gets for saying in the letter.
This came in today.
Go to Houston, yes. Alright, so what we're suggesting is
Take those, nah.
the draft that was in our packet, dropping two bullet points.
I think they're problematic bullets.
And filling with Russell's.
So I understand that, uh, bullet points, uh-
The last two, the fourth we fill.
I think I just want to, and allow for the construction of.
Cause otherwise, we've got some really good ideas in there.
Yeah. Well, the bullet points are easier to read anyway.
Oh, yeah.
People can go through them faster.
Can I ask a question about bullet point number two? Uh, change the special exception ordinance to leverage more needed benefits. Uh, the SE does not offer much flexibility for negotiating community benefits. What's, what's the?
Barely increases-
F A R, the whole F A R issue.
F A R, high-
How, well, I guess the question is how would switching to an F A R increase the city's leverage?
Density bonus, which we don't currently have, just during the height.
I think the thought is you can add a small, a small bit to F A R to get something in return versus our current system where basically you'd have to add a whole floor.
Right.
Which is-
Yeah. I mean, I know that'd be a big change for the city, but it's something that's worth revisiting now and then.
We don't have any, any, uh, leverage in our SE.
Well, I'm thinking about a project like, now, Founders Row's a bigger project than the typical one, but, um, even something like, uh, Broad in Washington that was recent, that there was discussion as it was going about what's the, the height setback on this frontage or that frontage, and so the building was changing heights and changing shapes. And of course, along the way, F A R is changing, so, uh, and that wasn't always, uh, at the broad level of one floor at a time. It could be, uh, at the level of, we'll shave in this setback, or, uh, take off the top of this corner, or push this back a little bit, or increase your setback on the third floor. So there were some changes going that were affecting F A R. The, the flip side of that, right, is that if you switch to an F A R, you may lose the ability to, to shave off the half a floor on Park Avenue. That someone may say, wait a second, I got my F A R bonus for, for being lead gold. Where's it gonna go?
I still think, I still think the special exception could be refined a little bit more.
Also, that's a-
As, as we have grown over the years, and that has been the mainstay for every development we've had. It has changed slightly in about the last, uh, you know, what, eight years or so. But we still do not have the type of situation, uh, where Arlington or Fairfax can have more leverage to get with a more-
It's also, it's also dwellings per acre. I mean, there are other ways to look at it too. I mean, on a resident, on a purely residential project, I mean, even like, not that this is the best example of late, but, you know, the, 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 the cottages, the railroad cottages project, not a lot, had lots of issues, but just take that from, in more abstract, you know, if there was able, if we could give a density bonus for providing some number of affordable as part of that, it helps to offset the developer's expense for subsidizing, you know, the, the, the affordable units, and in return, they get a higher density than they might have been able to get without providing the affordable. So there, there, there are some other ways to look at it too. So I, I think a density bonus, whether you measure that in dwellings per acre or for F A R.
And it would be more under our jurisdiction, so something we could do
Right.
as the planning commission to change moderate some changes.
So is the thought to be more explicit, uh, in terms of sort of, cause obviously, those things are negotiated through the D C process today. So the thought is just be more explicit about, um, adding, you know, this level of affordable housing, or this level of affordable housing at this income range, or this level of energy efficiency, or this level of, uh, T D N.
Maybe it would suffice to say just that we should think of other incentive, other ways to incentivize, um, the provision of additional units and without being so prescriptive. But, I mean, we could say such as, but not limited to, you know, F A R and density bonuses, but there may be other ways that we're, you know, not thinking of at the moment that could help in further incentivize it. I mean, there are all, there are, actually, probably, I know there are many other ways where-
Right. And I, I think it's just something that's more on our end of looking maybe at some different ways.
Cause everything, there's tax credits, and there's, there's, there's many different ways one could incentivize a developer to provide more affordable units than they're currently getting, so maybe we just need to say that.
All these are suggestions of different ways.
Yeah, I think, I think Paul's just trying to make sure the suggestion is clear.
I think, Paul, you had made the suggestion of offering to, uh, permit a project to go through in two years rather than three, but that was one thing where we had-
Yes, and that is, that is still in there, which I'm excited about. I think, well, and some of this is, if you can be more explicit about what the community's looking for, then you can very quickly hone in on sort of what are the decision points in the project. Uh, some of this is sort of having a community conversation about what's the right kind of project or mix of uses. But once that's decided, if it's clear what the trading points are,
Right.
can you get, can you get to an answer more quickly, whether it's yes or no?
Very well. Which seems bigger than this letter.
Right.
Um, alright, so do, do we wanna tweak that bullet at all about the, that, the bullet seems to be saying like, hey, if only we had control over height, density height or F A R, we could do more. I think what we're saying is we have some control over height by a result, some density stuff, but I mean, we should be saying in addition to height and F A R, other things.
We should look for- Right. We should look for ways to encourage, right, you know, other ways to incentivize the provision of additional units of affordable housing through, you know, whatever means, you know, might, might make sense. Um, so we could use those as examples, for example, through density bonuses or F A R, height bonuses, um, you know, I don't know, I, I think we should just be, be, be broader. Those are good examples, but there may be others and-
But there's examples.
Yeah. Maybe saying doesn't offer much flexibility, saying could offer more flexibility. Say, worded in the positive, I don't know. Um.
Cause as, as it is, it's so prescriptive that we really don't have much way of changing things.
Right, or just incent, again, that's what a lot of it comes down to. I mean, in affordable housing, that's a, if, if, there's a very dis, large and discrete financial cost to a developer to provide it, which is usually why they, you know, you kind of have to drag them kicking and screaming to do it oftentimes, and you have to provide ways to incentivize them so that they can offset the cost it's gonna take to provide it. It's not that they're bad people, but they're looking at the bottom line and financing a project and, and, you know, you have to find a way. And cities across the country have been creative and trying to do that, some more successful than others, but, um, yeah, so density is usually the easiest way, or allowing them to build more.
But, yeah. And the whole intent is to look at ways of the special exception to, to
Right.
to use it in a better way.
Right, so we should say, we should, right, just look at other ways to, to further incentivize the provision, you know, through, you know, examining how the special exception allows you.
Which is basically what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, or actually, can, I mean, essentially, yes. Um, yeah. We could just say such as, off, you know, such as, but not limited to those things. I mean, that's maybe enough, maybe it, maybe broader. Is that okay? Are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Alright.
Good enough.
You get that, Paul? It's kind of, kind of rambling there, but did you sort of get that?
Yeah, so if I understand, it's that second sentence that says something like, uh, uh, update the S E process to offer more flexibility for negotiating community benefits such as-
Right.
Right, right.
Right. I think that, that handles it.
So, yeah, update the S E, alright.
Cause we've learned as we've come along, that's for sure.
So that tweak, drop those two bullets, and then we'll, we need to vote on this?
Yep.
Right.
Can I just foreshorten this, so you're sure?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think you can do that exactly.
We can vote on what the letter from Russ says. I love that.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, so the sentence I created out of that was, uh, update the S E process to offer more flexibility for negotiating community benefits such as, but not limited to, offering an increase in density height or F A R.
It sounds good.
It sounds good.
Yavel it.
Alright.
And what is it, do we have to vote on this, or is it?
Uh, I think a motion would be helpful, just a motion to approve the minutes, or the letter as amended.
Alright, I'll make a, I'll make a motion since I was talking a lot. I'll, I'll move that we approve, uh, the chairman's letter to the, uh, to the mayor and, and council regarding the affordable living policy. Well, from the chairman and us, our letter.
Can you add like four whereas's to that first, though?
Yeah, well-
Whereas the planning commission's support.
You can just read the whole letter and you'd better-
This is not a formal act in here. We're really just transmitting comments. It's not a formal-
Look, if we want, if we want the demographic, people-
State code, yeah, city code required action here.
I can make some up for you.
So, I'll move that we, right, we, we, uh, we transmit this letter from the chairman and the rest of us regarding the affordable living policy as amended, uh,
Good.
as we just discussed.
Got it.
dated November fifth, twenty eighteen.
I'll second that.
Second by, this tweet's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You and you calling names.
I know, that's fine.
Alright, all opposed?
Alright.
Alright, everyone.
Another one down.
Now, uh, let's do a quick review of the September twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen minutes. Are there any edits to be made? They look spectacular to me.
I have none.
I have none.
I have one.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's fine.
Uh, this, Paul, you're the taker here.
Yes.
So on line seventy-three?
Yes.
I would, right now, it just says environmentally friendly and bicycle-friendly parking spaces, and if somebody wanted to know what the actual subject was, I'd, I'd change it to, uh, the location of electric vehicle charging and bicycle storage.
Electric vehicle charging.
And bicycle storage throughout the, throughout the site.
Actually, that's a good part, because it is kind of vague in here.
Right.
We have specifics there.
Well, I mean, we don't have tags and stuff like that, but I, you know, maybe in the future, we'd have a good search.
That's good. That's, that's a good change.
That's the only one.
Vehicle storage. So any other amendments to the minutes?
I move we accept the minutes, the minutes as amended.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, minutes. Now we're on to item number seven, informational items. Demographic trends report and the demographics chapter update. Paul?
Yes, um, uh, very well.
This one's pretty cool. I love demographics.
It is, it is the story of the community. Um, so, uh, before you tonight, uh, there will be a presentation by, uh, our consultant force, Lisa Sturdvent and Ryan Price. Uh, Lisa has been before the commission before to talk about demographics. Um, I think I said it then, I'll say it again now, that, that, the, the team with Lisa and Ryan, they're experts in demographics. They've worked throughout the region, uh, as well as around the country on a range of demographic issues, not only about people, but housing, workforce. Um, obviously, a lot of experience in that area. This, uh, presentation tonight is really part of a kickoff effort to update the city's demographics chapter. Uh, the demographics chapter for the city was last updated in two thousand and five, which makes those projections thirteen years old. Uh, the demographics chapter for the city was last updated in two thousand and five, which makes those projections thirteen years old. Uh, which in demographics means they are, uh, significantly out of date. Uh, also just knowing that here in the city, a number of changes have occurred since two thousand and five, not only the last five years, uh, which is what we're gonna see tonight. Uh, as you all are aware, uh, code of Virginia, uh, recommends, uh, requires that conference of plans be reviewed and updated every five years. So time for updating the demographics chapter is timely.
That's right.
Uh, the, uh, the demographics chapter, let's see, in two thousand, uh, five, uh, is a fairly short chapter. It's included in your packets. Uh, it's a fairly, uh, brief look at demographics. Uh, hopefully an updated demographics chapter would take a, a little bit of a more holistic look at demographics and also start to make those connections about how demographics relates to other areas of, uh, city planning. Uh, including impacts on, uh, uh, the environment, public facilities, housing needs, uh, where is the workforce going, what are the economic development opportunities that are possible with that? Um, the project timeline that's included in the staff report is of course, uh, um, tentative. Uh, given that this is the kickoff session with the planning commission and the kickoff with council is still to be scheduled because we are late in the calendar year. But the idea is to make this a fairly, uh, routine update, uh, that there are, the expectation is that there would be no specific action items coming out of the demographics chapter itself. So the idea would be to, uh, engage the planning commission and council, the other boards and commissions in a discussion about projections. And in fact, the intent, uh, with the demographics chapter is actually to purposely apply multiple demographic models and projection schemes uh, to show that demographics is not an exact science that can predict the exact number of people that are going to live in the city or the exact number of households needed to meet that demand. But rather to say that there's a range of possibilities out there, uh, and to allow the city to have a robust planning strategy to accommodate, uh, those, those potential futures. Um, with that, I actually wanna turn it over to, uh, our consultant team.
Ta-da.
You need your presentation.
It's, it's much better.
Yeah, I bet. There were some interesting findings in that.
Yeah, it was good. I've always thought of those.
But a couple of them, we said, weird.
Yeah. We have a big reaction.
I, I, whenever we talk about statistics related to the city, I always feel like you just have a giant disclaimer that, that's such a small place. Things are, you know, it doesn't take too many numbers to change and have a dramatic change on the stats. We get up like five documents.
Alright. Well, it sounds like we have a audience that's read the report, so, um. So, um, well, so just, we wanna thank you for the chance to come and talk. I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan here in a minute, but, um, as Paul mentioned, we, uh, had a chance to talk with you all in the past and done a lot of demographics and housing market analysis here in the, uh, in the region. Uh, Ryan and I both work together at George Mason for the Center for Regional Analysis and, uh. So, Ryan was on the staff of the City of Alexandria Plan Department and I work for Arlington County Planning, so we have sort of a work for our local governments as well, so. Um, looking forward to talking about, uh, the City of Falls Church. So we're gonna cover, um, the results from the analysis of mostly secondary data sources, mostly census data. And we looked at a number of different trends and characteristics and what we're presenting tonight and what's included in the report is not everything we looked at. But rather the things that we thought were the most, um, relevant to discussing the future in terms of the needs for infrastructure and housing, public facilities and so on. Or things that we thought were surprising, maybe that were counter what the narrative is, and we thought, well, let's put the data out there and see, uh, what the response is to what we're finding in the, in the data. I do wanna say a word about the data because as Mr. Anken mentioned, we're working with data for the City of Falls Church. And when we use census data, what we actually use are data from the five-year American Community Survey, which many of you may know. But the American Community Survey replaced the, uh, decennial census so that theoretically we can get estimates of demographics every year. But for small places like the City of Falls Church, the data that we present are actually data that were collected over five years. So in this case, a twenty sixteen estimate is based on data collected in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. In order to gather enough sample, in order to make the estimates reliable for reporting. So when we talk about estimates for twenty sixteen, just keep in mind that those are twenty twelve to twenty sixteen, an average, sort of. And that when we talk about twenty eleven, which is the comparison we do from twenty eleven to twenty sixteen, it's really two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven. What's, and what's problematic about that period, two thousand and seven to two thousand and eleven? Yes, we had a lot going on.
Yeah, yeah.
And so to your point about taking everything sort of with a grain of salt, uh, when we do this work, we, um, we look a lot at the confidence intervals and the reliability of the data. And then we decide, uh, we, we balance that against the availability of the data. And this is the data we have. And so this is the data that, that we're presenting for the city. Um, and so, uh, happy to chat about anything you don't see here. Um, I'm just gonna remind us of something before we get into some of the details. But, um, you know, oftentimes our minds go to the, uh, the impacts of population and change instead of the kind of root causes. But at the core, the reason we grow is because people, more people are born than die, right? So natural increase. Or we grow because, and/or we grow because more people move in than move out. And so, um, those are phenomenon that happen at the city level, at the region level, at the state level, and you can see those numbers here just on how. Uh, and this is administrative data, so this is pretty good data. That's the, the scientific term, it's pretty good, pretty good data. Um, that there has been a population change of seven hundred and fifteen people between these two time periods, July twenty sixteen, July twenty seventeen. And you can see the pieces that drive that population growth. So we're gonna remind ourselves of that as we're talking about the changes we're seeing in the population and might, we might ask ourselves, why are we seeing that change? Is it because new people are moving in, or is it because people who live here are having babies? Or is it because people who move here are stay, uh, live here are staying longer? Those are the kinds of things we wanna keep in mind.
Are you considering new construction or new?
See, that's the thing, we, we, this, so you don't build any homes and this still happens.
Okay.
Right? At, maybe at a different geographic scale for sure. But the, 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 the issue is, as we think about population growth on a, outside of the city's boundaries, these things are gonna happen no matter what. And so to your question, if you don't build more housing, I think that's an interesting question to think about, what would happen? Would people, would people, would that net migration number change? Would people stop having babies? Would people live in overcrowded conditions because they wanna be here? So that's kind of like the next question, in our opinion, that we think about sort of what's driving the population and then, and then think about that. So with that as a little bit of a background, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan who really, um, drove the analysis and let him speak, of course. Let's see, net of eighty-three, so more international immigrants moved to the city than moved from the city out to another country, yeah.
How do they define international? Are they any people who directly come to Falls Church City from a foreign location or someone who's not a US citizen?
Yeah, so.
Who's from Fairfax.
So if you moved first to Dallas from El Salvador and then you moved from Dallas to here, you're a domestic migrant.
Okay.
So you don't have to be in the caravan.
You don't have to be in the caravan. And if you are in the caravan, you're not here yet for another six, eight weeks, so.
Is this somebody who got on the plane and came right in?
Yeah.
And, and not to belabor this point, in our region, it's also, there's a lot of churn in this number as people who come here for work-related reasons. And so there's a lot of churn in, in that number, so I would, I don't think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, thanks for having me, commissioners. Uh, I'm Ryan Price, uh, senior associate with the firm. And I'm gonna walk through some of the key findings that we found, um, related to the population trends as well as the household trends. And then turn it over to Lisa to finish up with the workforce trends that we noticed. Um, so as we took a look at the population, you know, we, we examined three key age segments of the city. Uh, the millennial population, the school age population, as well as, uh, older adults. Uh, we also took a look at the racial composition of the entire population as well. So the millennial population in the city is growing, um, a bit faster than the Northern Virginia region as a whole.
How do you define millennials, sorry?
So in this, uh, analysis, they're defined as residents aged twenty-five to thirty-four.
In twenty sixteen.
In twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen, so born in twenty fifteen years, twenty-five to thirty-four, then twenty sixteen.
Yeah, but see, the data are over twenty twelve to twenty sixteen, so it's a little bit hard to put an exact date on it.
Some born like eighty-two to nine.
Ish, yeah.
Yeah. Which is pretty consistent with, with the.
Some people define it differently, some people.
So let's call them young adults instead of millennials. We'll call them people in their twenties and early thirties.
It's a little bit termy, right?
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough, yeah.
So, uh, as you can see with the map here, um, the growth in the young adult population, bit stronger than the region as a whole. But also a little slower than some of the, the neighbors, uh, directly adjacent to the west, Piment Hills and Idlewood, for example. Um, the data shows about seventeen hundred, give or take, uh, young adults in the, in the city in two thousand and sixteen, which represents about a ten percent, uh, increase. Um, and there are a couple of things driving this. Uh, it's likely due to the, the number of multifamily housing units in the, in the housing stock. Um, you know, compared to a place like Vienna or Herndon, where we're seeing a drop in this, this population segment. Uh, there are more multifamily units in the city. Um, and then additionally, there's some location differences. Um, mainly for, you know, proximity to the metro, as well as some of the major job centers in the region, you know, Tyson's, a few miles down the road, DC's fairly close. Um, you know, there's other urban style amenities, uh, close to Falls Church and in Falls Church. And these are all things that millennials tend to seek out as they're looking for a place to live in a region.
And that's something we want.
And do you wanna say a word about the comparison geographies? Just because we'll see these geographies over and over again.
Yeah, so we selected these geographies, uh, mainly because they are close to Falls Church in location, but also relative, many of them are, are similar sizes. Um, so we have, you know, in the, in the report, there's a population chart, but you know, Seven Corners and Vienna are all, you know, similar sizes Falls Church. So we, we didn't wanna compare Falls Church, you know, to say a Fairfax County, uh, or Prince William County, where it's just the, the scale and magnitude is so much different.
And just also, I'm, I'm a former census nerd, so these are CDPs, these are, these are census designated places.
That's right.
And so these geographies, to me today, they're, these are old CDPs and they're, to me, the boundaries are somewhat arbitrary.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Extremely arbitrary. And so just, well, that's another note of caution is that these, you know, the Idlewood CDP, you know, I'd, I'd be interested to know what's driving that huge increase in millennials. I mean, there's some big apartment buildings over there. I don't know what else is in there, um, that's doing that, but for people who are.
Affordable single-family houses.
It's, it's Mosaic from Idlewood?
No.
Where is that? Cause then, I guess it's, um.
It's already telephoned, it's the building is cutting it off there, but I think that.
It's further west, yeah.
But I think that, and CDPs, which are called census designated places, or like these census geographies that are, like more rural areas would like be like a little cluster of something that's not incorporated. Here, at one time, these were probably little clusters, but now with all the sprawl, it like, one kind of blends into the other, so just that is a note of caution as far as kind of what those are.
Is it own, its own CDP?
What is that?
Is Arlington its own?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, Arlington Incorporated's its own county, so they get counties.
But it is something that we were hoping for to increase through the next huge development. But this is what I, I, I take my question back that I asked you before about construction, and you said it had nothing to do with it, and now it has something to do with it, so I'm.
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is we would have seen the growth of the people aged twenty-five to thirty-four in the region, even if Falls Church built nothing.
They can't afford it.
Uh, well, it's funny how people, so, alright, let's take it a larger, we would have seen it in the country. How about that? That people get older every year, and so they're gonna get older every year. And whether they come here or not, you're right, has to do with the amenities that are available here, for sure.
Why did Vienna drop twenty-three percent?
So.
It seems really like a big outlier, especially.
Yeah.
Everything else gained, but Vienna lost twenty-three percent?
There's no next year, so.
Well, and, uh, fair enough. And the other thing too is that we don't, we don't have it on this chart, but we don't know what the base was either. How big was, you know, well, that doesn't explain yours, but I was thinking of the, the twenty-four percent for Idlewood, how small of a number were we starting with? Um, yeah, I don't know about the Vienna.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's likely due to the housing stock that's available in the city.
Dawson.
You know, larger, larger lots, more expensive single-family homes generally would be out of the price point of a, a younger adult just starting to work.
Supposedly McLean.
It's true, although, uh, a portion of McLean lies in Tyson's corner.
Yeah.
And there are a lot of multifamily units in that one portion.
I figured Piment Hills because that had lots of small lots with old houses that were slowly being bought up and remodeled.
Uh-huh.
Exactly.
Some locals rent there. I, actually, I know of millennial age folks who share, share a house and rent in Piment Hills.
Yeah.
The rents were cheaper, but the location was good, so.
Share a house.
There's just an door in there, it's a door.
Yeah, they're close to Tyson's, but they're not paying those prices.
Right.
Those apartments are expensive there.
And they're relatively close to the metro as well. All these are draws for the, for the younger adult population. Um, so we're also seeing, uh, a growth in school age population in the data. Um, there's about a seventeen and a half percent more, uh, residents in the city aged five to seventeen during the study period. Um, and as you could see on the map, this is similar to the go, growth trends in, say, like Alexandria as well as Herndon. Um, what's interesting though about this population segment is, uh, and again, the, you know, the, the data needs to be taken with caution. But we're seeing much faster growth just outside of the city limits, in places like Seven Corners, uh, as well as Idlewood. And as we look at the data, you know, what's driving this in the city is, um, a changing household composition that's occurring. Um, so, you know, one metric of this is looking at average household size. And so we took a look, uh, and the average household size in the city overall went from a two-point-four-six in two thousand and eleven, increased to two-point-five-six five years later. And so you're seeing more people per household. Um, in addition to that, we're seeing household composition changes where there was about a twenty percent increase in the number of families that have three or more children.
Yep.
Um, and at the same time, we're seeing a decrease in the number of families that have one to two children.
We've noticed that.
Yeah, and so ha, as, as this shuffling occurs, uh, the net result is a, an increase in the school age population. As we'll cover in a few slides, it's, it's interesting that, you know, overall, the, the number of households in the city with children is actually declining. Whereas the school age population is increasing, and this is, we think due to this, these changes in the household composition.
Yeah, I saw that point made a few times, I wanna clarify, that, that's the raw number of households with students or the percentage of households with students?
The nu, the raw number declined, yeah. Or not students, children. So it's, this is students, and, and so it's a little bit different.
Yeah.
One thing I wanna note about what Ryan said though, those trends that he mentioned are happening entirely in the home ownerships, uh, set of the housing, not in the rental side. And so, and so when we come to that, and I don't mean to jump in.
No, I'm glad he brought that in.
Um, that was important for us to understand because we were curious about how the renter population might be driving the school age population. And the answer we came up to is, it's not. The increase in the school age population is coming from larger household sizes on the owner's side.
Makes sense.
Yeah. So the growth in the older adult population, uh, has also been strong in the city. About one out of every four Falls Church residents, uh, fall into this age category, and we're seeing similar shares at the region scale. Um, you know, a lot of this is being driven by the fact that the youngest, uh, baby boomers born in the early nineteen sixties are now entering this age segment of fifty-five and older. Um, so we're gonna see this trend continue most likely in the next few years, as, you know, locally as well as nationally. Um, in terms of the numbers, we saw about twenty-three and a half percent increase in this population segment over the, the study period. Uh, you can see it's similar to what's occurring at the region level, a little bit faster though than some other inner suburban jurisdictions like, uh, Arlington and Alexandria.
Do you know if these are migrants or they're?
These are primarily people aging in place. These are primarily people who were in their forty, late forties, ten years ago, and in their mid-fifties, five, five years ago. Yeah, I think we have data in here on the length of residence by age of household head, but I don't think we have it in here, but let me, let me check for it as we talk.
Did you stretch it to the upper levels of age, rather than fifty-five and over? Only reason I, I say that is that at one period of time in our history, uh, the people were aging in place and, and our school population was going teek.
Mm, mm-hmm.
It was bottoming out to almost half of what it'd been.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and the difference is a new, uh, tear downs and building new places, so we went down to twelve hundred kids.
Oh, wow.
Around, uh, around the early eighties.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, a lot of, but a lot of this is just that, the massive baby boomer generation entering this, this age segment. So this is similar trends that we're seeing around the country. Um, so Falls Church is becoming more racially diverse, um, but at a slower pace than much of the Northern Virginia region. Um, so along with, uh, Vienna and McLean. So along with Vienna and McLean, Falls Church is actually one of the least racially diverse communities in Northern Virginia. About three out of every four Falls Church resident is a non-Hispanic white. So as we look at the population growth and kind of the new, the new population in the city, there's about a sixty, forty split of the new population where sixty percent are white and forty percent are non-white in the city. If we look at the same data over the same time period, at the region level, at the Northern Virginia region, we see a split of about eighty, twenty, where eighty percent is non-white, twenty percent is white. And so we're seeing different trends taking place in the city compared to the region.
So I have a question that I was actually getting there, but now maybe it's time to do it, which is, the other sort of thing that I think influences almost all this data is what you get to later, which is our complete lack of diversity in the housing stock, which I think clearly impacts this.
Yep.
So e, even, I, you know, ladies are your groaning at this number, and it's, you know, I think we all value diversity, so it's unfortunate to see this, but it's interesting to think about if you drew a circle around, I don't know, a chunk of McLean or Arlington that had more diversity in the housing stock, what would that look like there be? And I think it would probably be similar to ours. So I think our challenge is, if we're trying to solve this problem, is really better to start with affordable housing, just different kinds of housing, which when you only have two businesses.
Do you, do you have McLean's number? I'm curious to hear that.
We do in the report.
I'll look for it while you.
It's, yeah, it's about, it's very similar, actually.
One of the, if I could just to interject, one of the reasons in this effort to look at places like Vienna and McLean and Herndon and the, and the CDPs around the city was to get a sense of how does the city compare to other places that are of a similar geographic size and, and often of a similar population size. They're, they're a little different, but generally comparable, because often what you see in the news is how does Falls Church compare to Arlington or Fairfax County or Alexandria or, or Loudoun County? And those comparisons are not happening at the right geographic scale to understand how, what a community's.
Totally. And I think we have the additional challenge of not just the size, even you, even if you normalize on size, both geographic and population, like that housing stock, I mean, what is actually here is a big part of it, which is offered, right? Because, you know, a lot of the other stats you're going to quote about how wealthy we are are precisely because we lack all of that, this diversity in the old stock and, and like, like that. So it's, it's interesting to look at the stats and try to come to some sort of a conclusion. But it, it's really so much controlled by what, what's actually here on the ground and what, what can and can't change over time.
So in addition to population trends, we took a, a look at household level trends. And this was to gain insights into things like, you know, household composition, how that's changing, income levels, as well as, you know, as we were talking before, the types of units that households are occupying in the city. And so there are more households in the city than five years ago, and we kind of alluded to this a few slides ago. But this growth in households is being driven by families without children. So there's about a ten percent increase overall in the total number of households in the city, but households with children declined about five percent. And you can see in the table, it was, it's really the only community examined that had a decline in this composition. Areas next to Falls Church, like Seven Corners, Idlewood, and Arlington, all had relatively high increases in this household composition type. And, you know, as we mentioned before, a lot of this is being driven by the number of children in the households that have children. And so while there are fewer households overall with children, there are still more children in the households with children, which explains the, the age, age growth in the school age population. So.
It's a very unlikely.
That was surprising to us, honestly, yeah.
I'm not.
Even if I'm explaining it for, you're not, you, this is reinforced by what you've seen.
I'm not.
So as we flip the coin on that, what's interesting here is that about a third of all the households in the city now are people living by themselves, you know, which is higher than, a higher proportion than a lot of the region, as you can see on the, the right, the right-hand table. And interestingly, Falls Church had the, the sharpest increase of all the jurisdictions examined, about twenty-one percent growth of families, or households with, living by themselves. And this is likely related to, again, this diversi, diversifying of the housing stock. You know, as more multifamily units are coming online, you know, smaller units, those units are more likely to be occupied by someone living by themselves as opposed to a family, or potentially two people. And it's also being, you know, driven by, partially by delayed family formation of the millennial population. So you're having people living alone longer.
So these are elder, you don't think?
Uh, one out of four is someone living under age sixty-five. So, and the one thing I will say about that twenty-one percent increase is that's from a pretty small base. Again, we should talk about this base, that it's easy to show a big increase when you're starting with your load.
So this has come up a, a few times over the past few slides. And, and really the cities, what we're seeing in the data is that the city's housing stock is diversifying. You can see from the bar charts that the single family detached continues to be a pretty large portion, but the data is suggesting kind of an inflection point where there now would be more multifamily units in the housing stock. The city had about a fifteen percent increase over the study period in multifamily units, which was one of the fastest, if not the fastest, of the communities examined. You know, as we look at other communities that also have multifamily housing stock, like Arlington, Alexandria, each of those communities had about a nine percent increase, kind of as a comparative point, whereas Falls Church had a fifteen percent increase over the same time period. As we dig into that data, interestingly, about a third of all of the multifamily units are actually studios and one bedrooms. And this is up from about a quarter five years prior. So we're seeing the trend that the units are smaller in the multifamily buildings.
We've been building more over the past few years. Makes every po, every sense of, you know, makes absolute sense.
And you're seeing these, this housing stock, I think is, and came out in the report, is really driving a lot of the, the household and demographic trends that are showing up in the data. It's pretty clear from this table, Falls Church remains one of the, the highest income areas in the, in the region. About one out of every four households in the city has income a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more, which is the third highest of the communities examined. What's interesting though is this, this middle income bracket of fifty to a hundred thousand, household income. And we're seeing a surge in this, which is not occurring in any of the other communities in the region. And this is likely due to that rise in the one-person households. And particularly because a typical business and service sector job in the DC market makes in this income range fifty to a hundred thousand. And as Lisa will show in the, the employment slides, you know, one out of every four Falls Church residents that works is employed in that sector. And so I think we're seeing this rise of one-person, you know, business sector employees that's making in this range.
So in addition to population households, which are sort of your typical demographics markers, we wanted to look at workforce and the trends in the characteristics of the workforce. And this data, these data come from the Census Bureau as well, and we've also supplemented it with some data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. But as Ryan mentioned, the, the half of employed Falls Church residents work either in government or in professional and business services. So that's the top chart. Professional and business services is the largest sector in the Washington area economy. It's the highest paying, highest wage sector in the economy. It includes a lot of folks in technical services and a lot of folks on government contractor type jobs. Public administration includes the federal government as well as, you know, state and local government. So the interesting thing is, so those are what are called resident workers. And then when you look at what we call at-place jobs, that is, jobs physically located here in the city that could be held by anybody, it looks very different, right? So about one every four jobs located here in the city are actually retail or hospitality-related jobs. So the city has, when you look at measures like, like a location quotient, which is one way to measure the sort of disproportionate share of, of, in this case, employment by sector, that is a sector where the city is more highly concentrated. Again, the thing about that data though, we, we looked at that at the county level. So to your point, Paul, about comparing, making the wrong comparison perhaps, that when we're looking at that economic data, we were looking at it for Arlington, Alexandria compared to Falls Church, and not necessarily North Arlington or McLean compared to Falls Church. But I, so I think the thing that sort of struck me, because I think a lot about how communities plan for an increase in their workforce. And if you think about the fastest growing jobs in the region, they're in health and social assistance jobs. And when you talk about healthcare jobs that are growing, it's not anesthesiologists and heart surgeons, it's home health workers, and it's, it's nurses assistants. And it's jobs that pay in our region in sort of the high twenties to low thirties. And so these are region-wide, the jobs that are growing fastest, that and, uh, jobs related to leisure and hospitality.
I think it's larger than where in the city, you guys know? Is it Kaiser? What's the largest like, private sector?
Probably the school.
Do we really, oh, oh, the schools, yeah.
The schools, I think when you look at public sector, you know.
Because we, we are getting more.
At one point I heard it was tax payments for those.
I feel like it's just finance.
I think Kaiser's probably a bunch of.
I think Kaiser's going down.
Well, I, in this section, I mean, what I wondered was, um, I don't know if you've noticed, but I have a lot of office buildings.
I haven't seen many.
So obviously, a lot of our workers are working at restaurants and, in, in home health and stuff like. So did, if, how do we compare to other essentially residential areas, but limited?
Yeah, we didn't.
Are we at a whack, or are we kind of?
That's a good question. We didn't look at like the extent of the commercial space, or the office space, or vacancy. The fact that there's such high vacancy rates across the region strikes me that not having a lot of office space is not necessarily a bad thing in this market. That said, it, it also seems to me that the, the nature of work is changing and the types of spaces that businesses are looking for is changing. So having quirky, unique, different kinds of spaces, maybe, I, I'm spitballing here, but a restaurant that gets converted to some sort of, you know, cool office space. I mean, there's all sorts of possibilities for small office space.
Right, yeah. I just, I, when I saw it, it made sense to me.
Sure.
It's like, hey, we don't really have tall buildings.
Sure.
Peterborough or.
What I see with that is the fact that the jobs that are here within the city, the people who, see how I can put this, the people with our high level of need of income, our people are working elsewhere and not here. And in the low-level jobs, other people have to come in.
To coming in.
Right, but my point is, is that typical of any sort of highly residential?
Residential place.
Well, I think it is. I think it'd be typical. Falls Church is not quite a bedroom community.
Like Vienna, for example, but.
It's probably very similar. It's probably very similar, I would guess, because, you know, it's, right, it's expensive to live here. There aren't the jobs that you need to have to live here. DC's general wages are good, but you need to travel to places where, you know, those companies are located, Arlington. The business, the core business area is downtown.
Well, I'm sure we have plenty of fairly high-paid lawyers and doctors that work in the city, but there's not that many of them compared to places like DC, where it's like many office buildings full of lawyers.
You know, however, we had a real increase in the number of health-related, um, career buildings that are strictly health-related. And most of them, you know, taking over whole buildings and.
Yeah.
Heart-related.
Yeah.
And so we've really had a huge increase in that type of job growth there in the city.
And, and this is not an economic development, um, report, but it seems to me that since healthcare is one of those clusters that the region is looking to attract more workforce towards, particularly on sort of healthcare technology, if the city could position itself to be that attractor, you don't necessarily need tall, tall buildings. You could, you could have it more in this sort of campus-like settings. Again, this wasn't the point of the study, but I think this, uh, this employment issue is, is true for all the reasons you mentioned, but there are some specialized kind of, I think, niches here in the city.
Did you pull a number for a number of the percentage of workers that live and, live and work in the city?
We did. It's coming up.
Oh, it's coming up. I'm right through there.
This gets at a little bit of what we were talking about, so I don't need to go into this. But these are resident employment, are folks who live here and work somewhere, and these are the jobs that are located here in the city. You can sort of see that not unexpected split.
That's for sure.
Yeah. Okay, so let's look at the place of work. So the one on the left is the six thousand jobs, the six thousand residents that live here in the city of Falls Church and where they go to work every day. So Falls Church is red, so it depends on what, it's, this question I always have a hard time answering. Cause so six thousand of the people who live here in Falls Church stay here and work. The other one is, of the ninety-four hundred jobs here, five percent of them are held by city residents. So it's a different denominator, that's why I didn't remember.
Just so I understand, so this says there's about six thousand people who live in the city of Falls Church who have a job.
Who have a job.
And?
Who lives.
Eight percent of it, eight and a half percent?
Stay here, including those who work at home.
Right. My wife and myself, we're half of it right there.
Lucky minority.
But that there are ninety-four hundred jobs in the city.
That are located here, and five percent of those jobs are held by people like yourselves who live here.
We need more people here at lunchtime.
So not surprisingly, more, you know, more than forty percent of the jobs here in the city are held by people who come from Fairfax. It's got a million people, it's not surprising. But about twelve percent are people who come from Maryland, or from DC, or places further out in Virginia. So there are people, right, who are coming to some of these jobs from places from.
A lot of them are teachers.
Uh, that could be, yeah, we didn't look at that in particular.
Well, that part I do know.
At least.
Yeah. Comes from Maryland, thirty-two. And so we have a little bit more detail on some of the commuting patterns, like driving alone and transit and, and things like that in the report. And we can, I'm happy to chat about, we're happy to chat about other characteristics we looked at. But I did want to end just by reminding us where we're headed with this data. This is sort of the first step in this demographic analysis, working with Paul and his staff. As he mentioned, the goal is to do demographic forecasts, forecast of population, households, housing units, and jobs, which feed into the COG forecasting process, and will also be used for planning efforts here at the, at the city. And I think from a, a shift in how they've been done before, we're going to do these in a sort of scenario forecast. So we'll do a, a set of forecasts that have sort of relied on the same inputs that have driven the forecasts in years past, which have to do with household formation rates and other demographic kind of elements. But then maybe some scenarios that are more, for lack of a better word, sort of policy-relevant, like scenario, or sort of scenario-based, like I said before, if the city does X, then here's a set of scenarios. If the city does Y, here's a set of scenarios. And so we're really looking forward to, those will be done at the city level as well as at the transportation analysis level. And then using that data, we're really looking forward to talking with the Planning Commission, and then the Housing Commission, and other, uh, commissions and boards about what the demographic trends and forecasts mean for all these other issues that are really critical to the vitality and sustainability of the community. And then we'll have a very readable, very robust, very informative demographic chapter of the conference plan for the, for the spring.
And then if we have any large businesses, corporations moving in, all of this is going to be.
Right, so if we, so what happens if Amazon HQ two comes to Crystal City, for example?
I mean, throw it out the window.
Yeah.
They're splitting it.
I heard, that's what I heard this, this afternoon. That's what I heard this afternoon, you think, anyway.
Do you do forecasts, please?
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to do, uh, both, I did the forecast when I was at Arlington. So we're going to do these sort of top-down, bottom-up kind of forecasts, where we do, sort of build it up from what's possible, given land use and other constraints.
For which, for which characters, which?
We'll do them for, we'll do the, we'll do the population, households, housing units, and jobs. And the extent to which we have demographic forecasts will be the stuff that drives those, so it'll be household size, I guess. We won't do race, we'll do age, because we'll need to do, um, household formation rates. We could do race, I guess. We haven't decided really yet, yeah.
Did you, did you look at the, any, so for the racial diversity now, did you compare the relative diversity to before? I know like all of these, there's more people, like, did the percentage change much?
So for, for the city of Falls Church? So the, so the, um, non-Hispanic white population increased two point one percent in the last seven years?
Okay, so it was closer to seventy percent.
Oh, oh, so what was it before? Yeah, yeah, that, it actually hasn't changed that much, the share of folks who are, so in. Yeah, yeah, that, it actually hasn't changed that much, the share of folks who are, so in, yeah. So the city of Falls Church was 74% in 2011, 72% in 2016. And so, you know, what has increased the fastest is the Hispanic population's increased by 7%, while the overall's increased by about 2.5%.
And then, Paul, I noticed in the existing, in the report, there's a couple of like, hey, we made these projections and this was the result. But I noticed that in the old chapter, we did make some guesses on the changes in types of housing units. Did you look at whether or not those projections?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Uh, guesses in the number of housing units. No, I don't think we looked at those specifically.
But we will. Is there any, is there anything you wanted to see that you didn't see?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, good.
You still cut it off at 55, where people are still are working. I'm still interested in moving it up, since I'm one of the elders of this group or, you know, and all that kind of good stuff. Be quiet over there, no comments.
I was just gonna say, you still work some?
More happy with you being there.
Yeah, thank you. What, $92 a month for this job? You know, but seriously.
Yeah.
How, what kind of numbers do we have there? Because we do need to look for ways of perhaps getting some tax, taxes lowered. And we do need some figures along that line.
Yep.
To see what kind of help we can give to the senior, senior citizens.
Sure, sure.
There's 55 up to 65, you're still working. But, you know, when you go into that next echelon, there's a lot of special needs there.
No, that's right.
Retired people, people on, you know, fixed incomes and along that line. So I do think we do need those kind of.
Okay, that makes sense. We just recently finished a study of older adults' housing demand in Montgomery County, Maryland. And we did, we looked at, we knew that 55 to 64 is different than 65 to 74 is different than 75 to 84 and so on.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it was pretty dramatic.
Different band.
Different, incomes dropped precipitously. And so I think that's a good suggestion, maybe we can.
And we still have a lot of people living in their homes.
Absolutely.
And, you know, wanting to age in place, but yet there's nowhere within the city to age in place without doing something with, on that side.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yep, that's a good suggestion.
So I just think that that information is extremely important.
Mm-hmm, great.
You don't have to go all the way up to my age, but that's beside the point.
56, really?
Out of here.
He's definitely right, like, say you went like, either, I guess 70 plus. I mean, that's a different, very different.
Yes, for sure.
Absolutely.
I think our share of that population has dropped. Yeah, I may or may not.
Don't know, but this is something we need to know.
It'd be interesting, yeah, I mean, because those are the people that really sell and move families.
Mm-hmm, our tear downs.
No, no, the other way, these should be.
Tear downs with the bigger houses and some, or bigger families. Yeah, but I do think we need that for a lot of different reasons.
If I could, something Commissioner Fonte is that you asked us sort of what's the status of the projections? But the idea is to actually have this GOF meeting now to understand what are the questions that the planning commission has? What are the questions that the council has? Because we've got now trend data over the last five years. What are the questions that maybe could have been answered but weren't? We can track those down. And then what are the questions that are so important out of this demographics chapter? That if this is going to be the city's back base for some decision-making and some policy guidance on questions like public facilities, housing, economic development? What is the information that's important to decision-makers to have at the ready?
I mean, I think any data we can get on the variety or lack thereof of the housing stock, affordable units, both now and projecting, because that's one of the big things with the affordable dwelling thing, is the projections is it's going in the tank, it's not going in the right direction. And so those are kinds of things, because like I said before, I think a lot of that really influences all of this other data.
And the housing chapter?
The housing chapter will certainly need some of that information in terms of transit. If that chapter hasn't been updated since 2005, there was the kickoff with this group a few months ago. I think they're still looking at sort of how does the timing of that chapter work with the timing of this demographics chapter. Some of that, the trends in housing prices actually go to that question of what happens if the city doesn't build any housing units? If the city doesn't permit housing units, the ones that are here don't stay affordable. They just rise to the highest, to the level of the highest bidder.
Yeah. But I do think your information on the households of families, it's right on. With single-family houses is exactly what we're seeing. The two children are now the, there's three.
Yeah.
And some, a lot of bigger, going back to more, the bigger families.
Relate, I thought the data point about the increase in school-aged children coming from existing.
Right.
Right, it's exactly what we've been saying.
It's the same, it's the flip side of what you thought.
It's exactly what we've been saying.
Very different narrative, I think, than what a lot of, well, you don't, but I think a lot of other folks.
And, yeah, and that's what we were not surprised by, but that's what we had, we had thought. We, you know, we thought we knew where the rise in the school age population was coming from.
But it's something that our citizenry does not believe.
Right, I see what you're saying, yes.
They don't, they don't see that.
I mean, I think one of the, I think the balance, from my perspective, I was on the economic development authority for years and been doing this for a long time, is the constant balance between the change in our population and how that changes the services that need to be provided, which we're all scared to say. That means kids in schools and the cost of that. And then how that relates to the taxes and the cost of houses. And I think too many people think that you can monkey with two of the levers and not worry about the third one. And it doesn't, and so that's where we, you know, we have opposition to mixed-use development because, oh my gosh, it's more people, more school kids. But then you say, yeah, but if that building also has an office full of high-paid lawyers or something, they're going to pay taxes. And so this is, to me, the numbers, it's like you're walking a fine line, but there's no magic solution where you have fewer people, lower taxes, grade schools. It's just not going to happen. And so anyway, the numbers can help at least reflect the reality of the economy.
Yeah, because we keep trying to say the reality and nobody wants to believe it.
Yeah, so, and it's complicated, you know, I mean, we built Pearson Square and now that has a lot of school kids in it. Turns out that's, that's not great for us, we learned from that. Now we can build three-bedroom apartments.
Three bedrooms.
I also think this is less about them, but I think for the housing, or for the chapter, the demographic chapter, I think it's fine to have some tidbits of just interesting data, just because it's kind of interesting. But I think anytime the data is sort of hinting at a potential thing that we might want the city to change, we should somehow identify that and tie it to some other plan or some other part of the chapters. Because some of it, you know, you look at, or even just like the, you know, we just throw out the, you know, the minority data and all that stuff, the diversity data, kind of just present. Like, okay, but are we saying that that's good, that's bad? We want to change how we change it, we don't want to change it. And I think that unless, unless I'm wrong about the point of the chapter, but to me, if the chapter's just sort of informational thing, that's when you kind of throw all kinds of things at it, how many, how many red cars are there? But if it's, if it's actually meaningful to us, we should try to identify the unique aspects of the data. Hey, this is weird because of this. Or, hey, this suggests we need to try to change it or.
If I could, one of the things about the housing chapter that's obviously related to this conversation, one of the things we're trying to figure out internally is, is how do we have a conversation about all aspects of the housing market? And one of the things we're trying to set up in the narrative is the discussion of life-cycle housing. So what are the housing options that are available for someone who's just coming out of school? What about someone who's trying to grow a family? What about someone who's maybe downsizing because they're an empty nester? What about folks who have special needs, whether it's a group home or assisted living or low-income housing? So what are the, what are all the different kinds of housing that need to be available for different life stages as well as the needs that change as those things go along with it? And so I think that's something where, why is the state irrelevant? I think we can probably say that. So if the city has a bulge or a gap in some segment of its population relative to what's going on in the region or a comparable community or neighborhood, why is that happening? Is there something at odds with facilities and services that the city's providing or permitting?
Right, absolutely.
Well, you know, if you say, hey, there's this gap in the population we'd like to have live here and, okay, well, how would you get that? I don't know, maybe we'd build a bunch of townhouses. Okay, that's cool, now that's going to increase demand on that. That might raise our taxes or whatever. I mean, like, as long as we follow it all the way through or at least point out that that's how it all works.
Well, and I'd like to point out that public facilities doesn't just mean the schools. It could just mean things like the designs of the parks. Are there walking trails for people who are older? Are there bocce ball courts for people who are younger? So, and so what's going on in the design of public facilities, whether it's streets?
Right, and the only reason why I mentioned schools is because those are the most expensive. And really hit the topic very quickly, and that's the other thing that people care a lot about. But I agree, it's not just the schools.
And when you talk about diversity, unfortunately, our diversity depends on one section of our city, which is the only affordable housing that we have, other than our senior housing down at, down at Cary Hill. And but if that goes, we don't have any diversity.
Racial diversity, I mean, income diversity, but.
Racial.
We know that from the late?
Well, I don't know if we looked at income by race, but I don't think we did.
Well, just, just the fact that the field's mostly Latino.
Right, and that, for that category, I mean, the Asian population was our biggest racial group.
And we used to have the influx of the Asian population big time for a long while. But a, that a lot of them live elsewhere.
Yeah, I argue, income diversity is as, as important as racial diversity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
But without that, we, we have, yeah.
Well, there's some relation there, they're not directly related, you know, they're directly related, but they're, they're, there's some way to say that. Yeah, absolutely.
Other questions that the commission's interested in exploring or answering with this?
I was interested in the forecast from the last chapter, said we were going to have 18,000 jobs by 2020 in the city.
18,000 jobs?
What it says.
Really?
We have 9,000, so we missed that by, you know.
Where's HQ2 going?
18,000 jobs?
That's actually, if you look at the city's cooperative forecast for COGS, it's often shown that imbalance of a relatively modest increase in population and households and a relatively steep increase in, in jobs. And that's not dissimilar from what a lot of jurisdictions try to claim because of the fiscal benefits. And is that realistic for what's been happening in the city?
Well, I think for us, like, most likely, the only way we see a particularly large jump in jobs in the city is an increase in commercial buildings.
That will be, you know, that, that's important. It's important for the rest of the businesses, lunchtime.
Or is it home healthcare workers who may claim a home office but actually don't, don't actually need an office space?
Yeah, but I think you'd have to look at those numbers for that.
Sure. Well, I pulled up the, from the city's certified annual financial report. Top employers for the city, the schools number one, general government number two, Kaiser number three. And then you had the first healthcare services, BG Healthcare Services. Then you hit Tax Analyst, Kingsford, and then BL Home Care.
So city of Falls Church was ahead of Kaiser, that's interesting.
Yeah, in this report, it was 345 for the city, general city government, and then 325 for Kaiser.
I think Kaiser used to be bigger, but now they've, they've.
All those planners.
Yeah, Kaiser, in 2008, Kaiser was 580.
The planning department.
Wouldn't surprise me.
James Snyder's been hiring all those retirees. You too, Paul.
These are the people who work in that kind of building or somehow not directly work in that.
Really? That's a good point, they could be kind of contractors.
Which, I don't know, I'm just saying, the way the health industry.
Yeah, the auto dealers, Kingsford and Fire Balvo. The grocery stores, Harris Teeter and BJ's Wholesale.
But the Eaton Center is our biggest.
Well, it's a major business, so even though there may be a lot of houses, they actually don't show up as a single.
Right, those are all small businesses. It'd be interesting to know, like, employers, I don't know if the census takes, I don't know if it's a census figure, but the number of employees, like, average number of employees per business, you know.
That is available, firm size is available.
Yeah, I think we're mostly small, I mean, I'm sure we're mostly small businesses.
Virginia employment, yeah, I did, we can see that. But DC data's a little tricky though, because it gets messed up, because it often records where a headquarters is for a company. So it, it's, because you guys are so small, I would rather use data that y'all are collecting for someone.
Well, and we've also had problems with Virginia Employment Commission counting some of the things in Bailey's as being part of the city.
We used to get that tax return from that Safeway giant over the years, that was awesome.
We also used to get gas tax receipts from.
So then there's a plus.
Well, then they figured it out.
Yes, then it was bad.
We had to pay them back.
I think, yeah.
It's a big deal when you got.
Now we got more merchants.
But that's what, they had some of our money for something else. I think there was, it wasn't.
They had our bill for the bus, and they paid that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
That was great.
The feedback, we appreciate it.
And if I could just pull the planning commission, what are your thoughts on that idea? So normally, when we've done complete chapters in the past, it's included tricks of the farmer's market, surveys, public, general public meetings. Whereas here, we're looking at generally more sort of a procedural approach. And so there aren't actual items, there are no real priorities. But there is certainly public information going out about sort of what's going on and what are the gaps in the city? How does it compare?
I think the public would be interested to see the results, widely, I don't know, I don't think this is as much of a.
But the employee on it wouldn't, you know, you can't go around saying, oh, I don't think that's right.
Well, and that's the concern, is that it's looking at trends and what's possible. It's not, it's not the same level of input as saying, well, I want to spend money on that bike route, not on that highway speedway. Or I want to invest in that park over there.
Yeah, I would say, to the extent that we're sticking to numbers at school, but if, again, I don't know if it's appropriate for the chapter, but if it is also, I mean, it seems more likely that it would then point out to other chapters where our actual desires get categorized. So I just want to make sure we have those connections.
But I don't see the need for, the giving of information is the most important here, not to give.
Right, right, triggering everything.
Yes, I mean.
Tabulate everything and analyze it.
Anybody else trying to get this discreet and information.
This is a data chapter.
Data, 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 data.
I like that one, so, so you've got to get on city council's schedule and pick it off?
Correct. Yeah, November's a tough time to find a work session date, but new work session was added, so blank agenda. The 19th is now back on as a work session that was tenured.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Moving on, do we have any planning commissioner reports to report? I think there was any DC meeting I didn't make.
I'll mention that this affects Mr. Stoddard. In fact, the VIPUS is having its fall membership meeting this Sunday. And Mr. Stoddard is going to be one of the featured speakers on the.
Park ticket, yeah.
Park Avenue, Great Street Plan. So that's worthwhile coming to, it's three o'clock, it's going to be, this is a change of location, Paul. It's at the Presbyterian Church now, rather than the American Legion. So then it's three o'clock, so all are welcome, no, no charge, so.
For waitlist?
First one's first.
Great.
Luddy Hardy is also going to speak as well, she's going to speak on parking. So this is all very tactical kind of things that we'll be addressing.
Very cool courage.
And I understand that the CACT and the council are having a joint work session tonight. And one of the things that they're talking, they're talking about the neighborhood traffic calming program. Just want to make a plug for Jeff Sykes. I think he came on to the city's staff three, four years ago. And in that time, the city has now installed, I think, five or six neighborhood traffic calming installations. In the previous decade, I think it was zero. So he has really had a tremendous impact on, on the level of safety in the neighborhoods, in a good way. Also, I think they're talking about residential parking programs. Winter Hill was a success as a way to avoid potential overflow from 301 West Broad. Same installation is being considered, or a similar installation is being considered around the Found Row project. Also, they're talking about Parking Day and the tremendous success about taking a small parking space and turning it into a park. We took, I think, one, one parking space and managed to turn that into a putt-putt and a cafe and flower garden and Jenga board. So when you take 20 feet by eight feet, 160 square feet, you can really do quite a lot of, lot of good things with that. I also gave free babysitting to a very nice mom and three kids. Nothing better than hanging out in the park and letting a staff member watch your kids. I enjoyed it, it was a nice break from the day. The, hopefully she's watching, it was a good time. The, what else? Oh, they're also going to be talking about this presentation that Councilmember Hardy has prepared by working with a number of civic leaders in the city about what can be done to increase the accessibility and usability of parking in downtown. I think there's. And I, I understand that the CACT and the council are having a joint work session tonight, and one of the things that they're talking, they're talking about the neighborhood traffic calming program, just wanna make a plug for Jeff Sykes, I think he came on to the city's staff three, four years ago, and in that time, the city has now installed, I think, five or six neighborhood traffic calming installations, in the previous decade, I think it was zero, so, he has really had a tremendous impact on, on the level of safety in the neighborhoods, in, in a good way, also, I think they're talking about residential parking programs, Winter Hill was a success as a way to avoid potential overflow from three oh one West Broad, same installation is being considered, or a similar installation is being considered around the Founders Row project, also, they're talking about Parking Day, and the tremendous success about taking a small parking space and turning it into a park, we took, I think, one, one parking space, and managed to turn that into a putt-putt, and a cafe, and a flower garden, and a Jenga board, so, when you take twenty feet by eight feet, a hundred and sixty square feet, you can really do quite a lot of, lot of good things with that, I also gave free babysitting to a very nice mom and, and three kids, nothing better than hanging out in the park and, and letting a staff member watch your kids, I, I enjoyed it, it was a nice break from the day, the, hopefully she's watching, it was a good time, the, what else, oh, they're also gonna be talking about this presentation that Councilmember Hardy has prepared by working with a number of civic leaders in the city about what can be done to increase the accessibility and usability of parking in downtown, I think there's, you know, previous studies that show that there are plenty of parking spaces, it's the, it's the lack of sharing of those parking spaces that makes it difficult, and so, I think she's gonna be looking at what is possible if you shared, how do you better inform people about where parking is, what's public, what's private, for example, the spaces that are in the George Mason Square that are available, no one knows about, the spaces in Kaiser that people don't seem to know about, and then how do you actually get around once you've parked your car, how do you safely walk from where your car is to where you're going to go, so, it's not just increasing parking supply, it's about making sure you can get from the parking supply to where you're going, that idea that no matter what mode you use, at some point, you're a pedestrian, you've gotta be able to walk from how you travel to, to where you're going. So, that's.
Any other reports from the.
This week is the week of meetings.
For EDA meeting, yeah? Seven, four?
Tomorrow night, seven.
Yeah, EDA, EDA parks and rec.
All right, item C, seven C, correspondence, this was a couple of letters regarding that stoplight, I assume that's for our information?
Yes, that's for your information, two letters submitted to VDOT, related to the, the left turn access Chestnut Street into Fairfax County properties.
Probably the cost. Meeting's probably gonna be done as well.
Yeah, that's why.
A lot of pushback comes, yeah, it would be surprising.
There's been some pushback, yeah.
Was it pushback from the people that live in that community there?
Especially businesses.
Oh, that kinda makes sense, I mean, it's not easy to get there.
It's hard to get out.
The people on the, Gordon and Chestnut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the part that confused me, like, the, the story that somehow helped the cuts through isn't gonna make the cut through worse, but, I don't know.
It's just hard to get in, get out of that.
Seems like what would be ideal is a signal there that ties up with our road that's gonna go into our development, just saying, if you're watching Fairfax County.
Yeah.
It's VDOT, it's not fair to.
All right, I'm sure VDOT's not watching that, so.
Yeah.
All right, that's it.
Actually, question, um, had a question from.
There's no question section on the agenda, so.
Well, this is a, I, well, we usually get to ask questions through a commissioner of report.
Questions up.
So I, yeah, I question that, um, have we heard anything from VDOT on the turn into, like, the Clarence Downs property during the construction? Although, not that we have a site plan.
That property's kinda going on hold.
Well, not construction, but it's like, the, the whole point was.
Yes, I agree, I said I would not, I would not approve a site plan.
Have we, have we heard anything from VDOT, are we still chasing an answer from them, because I feel, that had to go to them.
That's still being coordinated, uh, the other thing we're looking at at the same time is, is the level of authority that the city has over its own roads, that, there's a, there seems to be some appendix in the VDOT Road Design Manual, but that states that it's only applicable in, it's, or rather, that it's not applicable in cities or towns of a particular population, so, in addition to having that conversation with, with VDOT about the, the media enclosure, we're also trying to track down, do they actually have authority to allow or deny?
You should ask forgiveness.
And has the staff seen any draft of a broad Washington insight, site plan?
No, there's been nothing submitted.
Okay.
They have some other things they're worried about.
One of the business owners asked me these questions, and I, I was like, I don't think anything has been settled.
No.
No, nothing's been submitted.
Okay, just wanna make sure I was truthful with my state.
How about Founders Row?
Uh, the site plan was signed.
The logo closed?
The logo closed.
Oh, did it?
Like, if I, there, wait, were, did they submit their construction plan, is that their public meeting?
Uh, yeah, so the, at this point, the, the site plan has been signed, it included all the requirements of the planning commission, stipulated in its approval, so, Director Public Works and myself have signed off on the site plan, so they have that in hand, construction management plan, I can confirm, but I think that's close to final, if not final, some of that is, is a function of how quickly they'll move through the different phases, so, what they're looking at now is the first several months involve what's called capping or cutting the utility connections, electricity, gas, water, sewer, demolishing the existing buildings on site, that'll take them several months, once that work is cleared or completed, then they can move into actually excavating the hole for the garage, that will also take them several months, and then once that's done, they can start building the garages, and then once they're at grade, the buildings can move from there, it's actually quite a.
Sounds so simple.
It's actually quite a complicated process.
Well, I had several people ask me that they're surprised that nothing started yet, like, no demolition, I actually had one of the property owners who has sold their property to this project, ask me when they thought they would have to really be out of their house, and I was like, I.
If you sold it, probably not.
Talk to your landlord.
Well, no, that's, that's the thing, well, I think they're, you know, their sale was contingent on the site plan and everything being finished, and I, you know, I thought it was interesting that they don't seem to be communicating very well with them, but.
Uh, I think they're focused on getting the, the final pieces of their, their administrative approvals in line and, and closing up all their.
I think they need to give them a date, get out of the house now.
Sure, and then, uh, consistent with what the planning commission was talking about, uh, staff and the developer have been talking about doing a community meeting, sharing the construction management plan, I actually invited them to come to the planning commission and share it with you all, because it was something you were interested in, it's also televised, so there would be a recording for anyone who can't make one of those meetings, they would know what to expect, as well as who to call, if something's not going the way they, they expected, yep.
Any other questions for our question section, and there's no planning director's report on here?
Uh, there's no item for it, uh, my thought was that moving to a once-a-month report with the document that I presented last time, it takes quite a bit of collective effort to pull that together, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I will say that we did have a planning advance, planning and economic development staff got together last week, talking about the twenty forty vision, what does that mean to us, we all got to draw some pictures, some people are very good at drawing, some people participated in the drawing, and then we got to talk about sort of what is the role of the planning shop and economic shop in moving the city forward toward that twenty forty vision, it was a very positive, I thought, event, and I think I'll probably share some of the drawings with you all, probably won't tell everyone I'm doing that, some people are a little embarrassed, but I think they'll.
And the, and the city hall is delayed.
Pushed back a little bit, yeah, city hall.
Back.
Uh, city hall, the latest I heard is that they're still looking at a, a February move-in, that actually works well with the ten-acre site, the February move-in's actually beneficial to the planning staff, because that'll give us time in the same office to receive the SCE, the, the special exception of title and application, and get it out to the boards and commissions, without having to move offices in the same time.
In the middle of it, yeah, and then there's a ULI TAP, when is that actually, no, we're done.
Uh, November fourteen and fifteen, so that's next week, and that'll be a, a technical assistance panel looking at the east end of the city, the Eden Center, as well as some of the larger multifamily buildings around there, and the twenty-four hour fitness site, the TAP, we, staff had originally been looking at an east end TAP as a way to get a start on smaller planning for that site, and then it just happened to be very timely, because the Oakwood Towers did change hands, and so now's a good time to be talking about what's going on in some of those larger multifamily units over there, there's, there's a number of them over there, the others are in condo ownership, so they're unlikely to do anything, but it is interesting to, to ask that question about where are some of those projects going in the region, there are a number of large apartment towers that were constructed in the sixties, and it, it may be time for something to happen with those.
All right, great, anything else? All right, then we're adjourned, hopefully Russell will be back next time.